One, two, three, four, five.
And.
.three of council's code of meeting practice. I inform the persons attending this meeting that A) the meeting is being recorded, livestreamed and made publicly available on council's website. And B) the persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. In relation to clause four point one A where a public forum is held as part of a council meeting, it must be conducted in accordance with the other requirements of this code relating to the conduct of council, which means that the public forum will be broadcast via live stream on council's webpage and included in the subsequent audio visual recording of this meeting. So on that note, I would like to invite Reverend Bruce Hammond from Liverpool Presbyterian Church, who will offer an acknowledgement of the country and a prayer, the prayer of council, followed by the national anthem. Could I invite everyone to please stand?
As I always begin, I want council to know that we in the Christian church are constantly praying for our council and for your good health and for the wonderful job that you do in looking after our community. And we thank you for the efforts that you put in. We acknowledge that God having created the world and all that's in it, with respect, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Cabragow clan of the Darug nation. And I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by people of the Darwol and Darug nations. We affirm our hope and dedication to good government, the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their background, race or creed. We affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and the best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff at council, and all those associated with good government here in Liverpool. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Let us pray. Our great God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the quality of life and the freedom that we enjoy in Australia. As we are part of a world that has so much trauma, we pray for, in hope for peace and the continued peace for Israelis and Palestinians who have suffered so much and need peace and restoration at this time. We also pray for peace in the Ukraine and everywhere else where there is conflict. Help us to be a healthy, multi-ethnic community, to have a unified culture and as a nation to know peace and unity. Help us to enjoy and reflect your great love for us, which was demonstrated when you gave your one and only son, so that whoever believes in him will receive the forgiveness and eternal life. We thank you for our emergency services, paid and volunteers. With so much pain in our world, we thank you that this nation has been so blessed by God and for our strong Christian heritage, which makes this a home for so many from all around the world who escaped from a lack of freedom, from disease, from famine and from war. We pray for our Prime Minister Anthony Albanese, an opposition leader Susan Lee. We pray for all those who serve in our federal government. Father bless our Premier Chris Minns and opposition leader Mark Speakman. And we pray for all who serve in our state parliament. And we also pray for strong and stable government for many years to come. Father, we thank you for this city of Liverpool and for the long heritage our city has enjoyed. We thank you that in recent decades so many have come to live here from all around the world to find safety and security and share in the Aussie way of life. We pray for everyone who moves here that they may find the blessing that you give and know your divine hand of blessing in their lives. We pray that everyone who makes this nation and this city their home may find healing from the past and have hope for the future. We also pray for our council, our mayor Ned Manon, our councillors and the many hardworking men and women who provide the many services which keep our city functioning. We pray for unity and for peace among everyone who works and lives in our city and trust you continue to bless our community well into the future. Bless this meeting tonight. We pray for all who speak that you would give them courage and clarity of mind and word and that they may have that confidence as they express what's on their heart, which is for a desire for what is good in our community. Father, we thank you for our past. Trust your wisdom and guidance for our present and commit ourselves to you for our future in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you everyone, please be seated. And thank you once again Reverend Hammond for your kind words and prayers. We are indebted to you here for everything that you do for us, not in your role just as a reverend, but just for keeping us in your prayers and thoughts. So we want to thank you very much and please pass our well wishes on to your congregation from us. Our next item is the apologies. We have one apology from the deputy mayor, councillor Dr Green. I move that her apology be accepted. Seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is the confirmation of the minutes of the council meeting held on the 24th of September two thousand and twenty five, the extraordinary meeting held on 24th September, which was adjourned and held on 25th, and the extraordinary meeting held on the 14th of October two thousand and twenty five. Someone happy to move them as a whole?
Happy to.
Moved councillor McNaul, seconded councillor Harrell. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Are there any declarations of interest? No declaration. Just so there is no public forum and no petitions? There is one mayoral minute, but councillors, what I would like to do before... I just want to give notice that today we have our auditors who are with us here for our financial reports, which is item corp zero four. So just after the mayoral minute, I'd like to bring that item forward. So allow me to formally move that way, that we bring item corp zero four after the mayoral minutes. Yep, moved myself, seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion? All those in favour, against, I declare it carried. So the mayoral minute we have today is about a young achiever award. Today, I'd like to warmly congratulate a rising star, Jada, and I'm, I should have, after all these times, I should have... after all these times, I should have been able to pronounce her last name properly. Nabland, um, no. Nalbontoglu, thank you, perfect timing councillor Hart, who has been named Young Achiever of the Year Award at the two thousand and twenty five Women in Local Government Awards. As council's digital assistant, Jada played an instrumental role in bringing Liverpool's stories to life. Her creative and digital expertise transformed the way we connect with our community, from major infrastructure announcements to grassroots community-led activities. Jada's work didn't just inform, it inspired. Through her storytelling, she helped elevate Liverpool's voice across Western Sydney and beyond. During her time at Liverpool City Council, Jada produced dynamic video content showcasing council initiatives, infrastructure projects and major community events, led innovative social media campaigns that significantly boosted community engagement, championed inclusive storytelling that celebrated Liverpool's cultural diversity, youth voice and civic spirit. Her award recognises excellence, leadership and outstanding contributions by young women in local government across New South Wales. Jada is a shining example of how local government can empower young people to build skills, gain experience and grow in confidence. Her success reflects not only her remarkable talent and drive, but also the opportunities councils likely will provide for local people to thrive professionally and creatively. By embracing every opportunity, Jada used her creativity to tell Liverpool's story and help our community feel seen and connected. Her achievement reminds us that councils are more than service providers. We are places where careers are launched and futures are shaped. Jada received her award from the New South Wales Minister for Women, Jodie Harrison, and the Minister for Local Government, Ron Honing. Her achievement is a proud moment for all of us. She has brought a shining light to Liverpool City Council. And I'd like to move that council acknowledges Jada's award and sends congratulations on behalf of all councillors. That was it. Any discussion? Was I just going to say something?
Yeah, I was. I just wanted to add my congratulations as well. Jada is such a vibrant young woman and it's wonderful to see young people succeeding and particularly with the fostering that they've had within the organisation. And so I'm really happy for Jada.
I'd like to shout out Jada as well. I know she's watching at the moment. She just messaged me thanking me correcting you with the surname. So congratulations to Jada and all the work that she's done for council.
I'm sorry, Jada, sorry. Or any further discussion? All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. All right, so now that's done, we will now move over to you. Bear with me for a moment. Great. Councillors, I'd like to now move to item corp zero four, the annual financial reports for the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five financial year. That is on page three hundred and fifty five. I'd like to formally move that way with just one slight difference to what is written in the book, in point two, where it says deputy mayor, change that to councillor Peter Harrell. The consensus of deputy mayor is not here to sign, that's to sign the reports. So I would like to formally move that way. Is there a seconder? Seconded councillor McNaul. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councillor Rushevsky?
I noted that there was a note in the financials, A one dash one, significant events is listed, which states that on eighteenth of July two thousand and twenty four, the Minister for Local Government ordered a public inquiry into Liverpool Council regarding allegations of dysfunction and maladministration. Considering the precedent set at the last council meeting where we had a walkout, we can't talk about things before the inquiry. Just to clarify confusion, is this allowed to be discussed?
Councillor, who is your question directed to?
CEO.
Well. It's on the agenda.
Sorry, through the mayor. The matter of discussion is a matter for council. I can't arbitrate on what should be discussed. The council needs to make and the chair of the meeting needs to make a decision about what councillors discuss.
I think councillor Rushevsky raises a very good point, particularly in light of MOU one that was passed at the last extraordinary meeting. My question is to the CEO and if not, if the CEO can't answer, then the relevant director. Was this item subject to any independent legal advice confirming that the item is lawful and appropriate and does not give rise to or contribute to any psychosocial hazard or risk under applicable work, health and safety obligations?
Happy to answer, councillor, if you can describe what your, the word independent means, independent of what?
That's the motion that council passed at the last meeting. I can't speak to as to the definition of it. It's, I would say up to council officers to interpret the meaning of the motion, given that word, as it was passed in the motion, isn't defined. So it's not for me to define it. I'm simply asking whether or not council officers have complied with a resolution of council.
Well, councillor, let me just, I guess, set the tone from the get-go. At the end of the day, the motion is on the agenda. The CEO has prepared the agenda, right? So according to the code of mini-practice, the motion's now in front of us here to deal with. I have not ruled it unlawful. We will now deal with the motion. Any questioning regarding that, you can bring that up in the appropriate form. At this point in time, we're debating the content of the motion, right? So it's simple as that. So do you have any questions regarding the report before I call the auditors up to come and present about the report?
My question is the same. Was that legal advice obtained? It's a resolution of council that matters related to witnesses at the public inquiry are deferred until those things occur.
Yeah, I'll hand over to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, it's a really difficult question to answer because it's now it's been rephrased differently. You asked me if there was any independent legal advice obtained. I'm asking you, what is your interpretation of independence? Is it independent of me?
Sorry, assuming councillor, I'm on a hand. The CEO was speaking. Please do not interrupt the CEO, right? The CEO has the call.
All I ask councillor, independent of what? Independent of me? Independent of council? Independent of what is your, is your question?
I'll put it this way. Was independent legal advice either independent of yourself individually in your role as a CEO or independent of council, as in not council's legal team? Provide legal advice in respect of MOU one from the extraordinary meeting on the fourteenth of October.
Thank you. So in context, that would mean external independent advice because you've clarified that without, without going, the answer is no.
Internal?
Oh, yeah, we take legal advice on every part, every part of the agenda.
So internal legal advice was provided specifically addressing its lawfulness, appropriateness, and whether it does or does not contribute to psychosocial hazard.
Advice, contextually, if nothing is said about a matter, then there's no advice. So what happens is the general counsel looks over all the paper and by exception, if it's nothing, if there's nothing to take further steps on, then by proxy, that document is okay to proceed. And that's what we, that's what I have ruled to be put on the agenda for tonight.
So no advice specifically other than the exception that it's been reviewed and nothing was pointed out that needed further advice?
Correct.
Thank you. I would now like to take this opportunity.
Sorry, I haven't finished my questions.
Is it, yes, what's your question councillor?
I've noticed grant income dropped from twenty six million to twenty one million in the last financial year. Can I ask what was the reasoning behind that through the CEO?
Thank you. Through the, I'll refer the question to the chief financial officer directly.
And just before he answers, would it, to kind of seek guidance through you, CEO, would you like the auditors that make their presentation, who are here first, and then maybe once they complete their presentation, we can ask some questions?
Yeah, through the mayor. Perhaps that's prudent because perhaps as the presentation proceeds, the auditors would be, may have an opinion about the exact question you asked, councillor. So perhaps that's the best way to proceed.
Is the CFO, Director of Corporate Support supporter of that?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep, wonderful. Well, on that note, can I ask councillors to start noting down your questions? If I can please invite those from the New South Wales Audit Office who are here today to present to us. And thank you very much for your time for joining us. Just press the button on the mic, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thanks everybody and good evening. Perhaps if I give a bit of an overview of the audit process this year, I'm pleased to report the audit went very smoothly this year. We had the full support of Farukh and Vishwa and the finance team. It was a smooth audit process and there were no unadjusted differences on the score sheet. There were no significant control deficiencies and we are in a strong position to sign an unmodified audit opinion. If I perhaps give a quick kind of flyover of some of the results, you know, I think it was a relatively normal year from a financial perspective this year. You know, there was the usual increase in rates, I think six and a half percent that was approved by IPART. Similarly, some increases in costs around staff costs, again, in accordance with the local government award. Grants and contributions together were broadly kind of in line year on year. And there was a kind of a ten million dollar deficit recorded for the year. Yeah, perhaps I'll, I'll pause there for any specific questions. But yeah, broadly, the audit went smoothly and we're in a strong position to sign a clean opinion.
Do you want me to ask that question to yourself, grants? I'm not too sure if you'd know. I'll phrase it again. Basically, grant income dropped quite significantly, pretty much fifty percent of what the deficit was. And if we maintained that level, we probably would have halved the deficit. Do we know why the grant income dropped?
I perhaps have to refer that question perhaps to Vishwa. We're really, I'm not sure if we've got a specific.
So through the, through the CEO, I think the question is regarding what is the, the councillor Rushevsky's asking is the change in the, the grant, projected grant income.
Through the CEO, there are two components of the grants income. One is the operating grant. And one of the key reasons why the operating grant went down was that the Grants Commission reduced the percentage of advanced grant for the following year. So instead of eighty five percent, that paid us fifty percent. Obviously, that's outside the control of council and it's kind of determined by the, by the COVID government coming through the Grants Commission in New South Wales. That's on the operating grant. In terms of the capital grant purposes, sorry, there's one more in there. In the budget, the budget assumed that there will be some contribution from the New South Wales Fire Rescue Services to remediation of some PFAS contamination. That actually didn't come through because they have decided to do the work themselves. And I think that's a good outcome for the council. In terms of the grants, for the capital grants, yes, there is a reduction in the actuals collected. Now, there is, I guess there is more than one factor that is affecting that because if most of that relates to the Western, Western Sydney Infrastructure Grant, the amount that is recognised as revenue depends on how much works has been delivered and rest of the grants is actually treated as deferred income and will not be recognised until the work's done. Hope that explains.
Looking at the financials, five point four million was included in the two thousand and twenty five financials that related to the twenty six financial year. So we have included some grants in that income for this financial year that relate to the next financial year. So I'm still not getting a reconciliation of why it's, there's a significant difference.
So your question is through to who?
CFO again.
Yeah, through the CEO?
Through the CEO, the impact we're talking about, the fake grant is three point seven million dollars. And that is advance paid for twenty five, twenty six. What we're going to get in twenty five, twenty six is the remaining fifty percent. We are assuming or we assume in the budget, we're going to get eighty five percent in advance for twenty six, twenty seven. And we have been advised by the Grants Commission that that might not happen.
Maybe if I ask it this way, were there any specific grants that we didn't apply for, or we lost, or reduced?
Through the CEO, yes, there are a lot of grant applications that is made during the year and also some are successful, some are not successful. I have to take that on notice in terms of which grants we were not successful in. And having said that, we actually report in the quarterly budget reviews, the number of grants applied, the ones that were successful and the ones that were not successful. So there is a schedule provided in the quarterly budget reviews, if that helps.
So that five million dollars shortfall.
So councillor, can you please direct your questions through the mayor or the CEO, please?
Through the CEO and to the CFO. What services or infrastructure or community projects have been delayed or cut because of this five million shortfall in income from grants?
None.
So one thing I couldn't understand, and this, you can probably answer this, there was a note, significant judgment in employing the council's accounting policies, impairment of receivables. Council has made a significant judgment about the impairment of a number of its receivables, refer to note C one dash four. Can you probably explain that in layman's terms, what that means?
Yes, certainly. So I think within the accounting framework, management are required to identify any significant areas of judgment within the financial statements. As with any, you know, book of receivables, there's always some judgment and doubt over the hundred percent in full recovery of all receivables. And you'll see in the notes, the accounts, there's a provision recorded against the debtor book. And there is an element of judgment in that, which really just acknowledges the subjective uncertainty around the recovery of the debt.
I was probably more concerned about the use of the word significant judgment, which got me a little bit concerned.
So I think that's a term that's required by the accounting framework to identify the most significant judgments in the context of the financial statements. And it's, I suppose it's quite, quite a normal thing to have in there around the recovery of debtors.
You also mentioned in the report some risks concerning infrastructure maintenance versus new works. If existing assets are not maintained, risks build up. Long-term plan is this report warns of pressure. Rate payers pay now but may pay more in later if infrastructure fails or renewal is deferred. What's your opinion on that?
I think that's really a question that kind of goes beyond the financial elements of the, the statements. We would certainly look at depreciation and how the asset is consumed over its useful economic life. And, you know, there are some judgments around the, you know, the depreciation periods and so on, which we look at as part of our work. We also work closely with the valuers who produce an independent valuation on the assets. And as part of that process, they would take account of any dilapidation in the assets as part of that process. For the FY twenty five year, there wasn't a comprehensive revaluation done of the property. For the FY25 year, there wasn't a comprehensive revaluation done of the property plant equipment. I think that's done kind of periodically. So it was really just a kind of an indexed roll forward in the FY25 year.
The other thing I actually wanted to get your professional opinion on. A deficit of 10.4, but a budget was estimated at 2.6 surplus. Now, that's a $13 million turnaround. So it's not a minor adjustment. And let's not forget that we did increase rates by 5%, more than the rate of inflation. Now, that seems to be that there's, it's not a small oversight or an accident. It could be poor financial controls, lack of internal accountability. There was 2.4 million dollar rise in borrowing costs in buying 600 Cow Pasture Road. Now, that property is the subject of the public inquiry as well. So over two financial years, we've delivered a $20 million loss, correct?
That's correct. A deficit, yes.
Yep. So for every dollar deficit, you know, that's money that we don't have in the bank for roads, parks, footpaths, community services, renewal of those assets that you mentioned. I just find it hard that families need to live within their means, so do businesses. And we're blowing our budget by $13 million. What is your opinion on this variance between the budget and the actuals?
Oh, sorry. The first thing to say would be, in our role as auditor, we really focus on the accuracy of the financial results. We're not really here to comment on the, you know, the substance or, you know, some of the kind of questions that you did mention. Having said that, I think of the difference between the budgeted surplus and the $10 million loss, I think about 8.5 of that relates to the sale of a property that was included in the budget, which never eventuated. So that would account for eight and a half million of the 13. I think it was number three.
And one final question. Have you seen this massive variance with other councils in terms of budget and actuals?
I think as with any council, there are unders and overs during the year. And, you know, unders and overs against budget for a variety of reasons. But perhaps again, through the CEO and perhaps through the CFO, maybe, you know, perhaps Vishwa could potentially offer a further explanation. But certainly there are unders and overs with any budget.
Thank you. Does any other councillor have any other questions? All right. Well, if there's no questions, can I thank you very much, Mr Thompson and Miss Lee, for your time here today. And we really appreciate that not only the small part of your time here today, but more importantly, the work that you've done in the last few months, working with our staff for the audit report. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Well, so I'll now, we haven't actually determined that motion yet, have we? Veronica, can we just, all right, great. So if we can just put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Councillor McNaught?
Mr Mayor.
Through the CEO.
Point number two authorizes the mayor is missing. Councillor Peter Hart, Executive Executive in the RIO.
Yes, Councillor McNaught?
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move that we continue the agenda, however, in a different order. It's quite an extensive agenda and I'd like the questions with notice and the notices of motion to be heard at the end of the agenda. I propose that.
Can I, just one second. Do you have a second for that?
Happy to say.
Happy to second. Can I just add, councillor as well, I know there's a fair few operational staff here who've been here since very early in the morning, doing their jobs. And they're here to, if we have any questions about the reports. There's also, in doing that, if we can bring Operation 04 up forward as well, that would be helpful. So at least the staff could get going if you indulge that in your motion, Councillor McNaught.
If we could consider next Operation 04 and then continue through the the reports to council and then at the end, we consider the questions with notice and the notices of motion.
Councillor Moon, you second that?
Can I make a quick point? There's some people here relating to NOM 03 and they expected the agenda to be as per the agenda. So I suggest we deal with that first and then go to these other items.
Okay. Are you happy with that, Councillor McNaught? So just NOM 03?
I'm happy if just NOM 03 goes then and then we'll continue.
Are you happy with that, Councillor Moon? Okay, so we'll do NOM 03, then we'll do Operation, the floodplain report, I think it was Operations 04. Yep. And then the rest at the end. All right. Is there any further discussion? Ops 01 is the same one? One and four, is that all right?
Should we move to do the notice of motion 03 next, followed by all of the operational reports? And then go through so that we're in the same sections? I don't mind if we do that.
Yeah, that's easier.
Operation reports, followed by all the other reports and the confidential, and then followed by the notice of motion and questions.
So NOM 03, Ops.
Yep.
And then we go back into as the order and then NOMs at the end.
Correct.
Okay, cool. Second, are you happy with that? All right. All those in favour? Against, I declare carried.
Jump in. Sorry, Mr Mayor and councillors, I've got a conflict of interest in Conf 09. I'm not sure whether it's, I think I'll call it pecuniary because it's an honorarium, but less insignificant. I'll stay in the room on that and I'll do my form.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councillor Stevsky, NOM 03?
I move the motion.
Second, Councillor Monahan? Any discussion?
Yeah, just wanted to, a few questions and a quick discussion. It's good to see a few of the members of the community here. They did fill in their form to speak on the weekend, but they received an email saying it was rejected based on a minor admin. I'm just disappointed that the phone call wasn't picked up to try and rectify that, to give these people an opportunity to talk. Just simply saying, oh, you've done an admin error, you can't talk. It's not good enough. And I think we need to adopt a more caring approach because these guys, I have gone to visit them and it's affecting their lives and it would have been good to hear from them. But being so, in relation to this notice of motion that is before us, the thing that concerns the residents and probably myself, that the amount of car spaces is eight, but there's 39 units. What happens in that situation through the CEO if every single one of those residents has a car, but only eight car spaces are provided? Where are the other 31 cars supposed to park? Because that street is so narrow that if there was parking on both sides of the street, you couldn't get an ambulance or you virtually can't drive through. What happens in that situation? Because that situation is possible. How do we do with that?
I'll hand over to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, over to the Director of Planning and Design.
Thank you. Through the CEO. Car parking rates for this type of development are set by planning controls and determined by state government most of the time to ensure that the affordability component of housing, this is considered as one component, to deliver affordable housing. So we can regulate and control unauthorized and illegal parking on street. Any issues within the complex, so any parking within the complex, say, that's taken up by members of the public, we can help facilitate discussions. The Strata Body will take ownership of any inappropriate usage. However, we are not empowered with any development to control vehicle ownership and location for parking based on the rate of parking that is associated with the development. We can only control unauthorized and illegal use of on-street parking and help facilitate any issues that may come about with respect to inappropriate parking within the complex. I understand that some areas may have higher vehicle ownerships and they need to manage it as they do in many areas across Sydney because they all have the same parking rates. We can help facilitate mitigation measures such as onsite, on-street rather, parking provisions. A lot of the time, if there are issues with accessibility for emergency vehicles, we will ensure that we implement measures such as, I know, stopping provisions on one side of the street. So I hope that answers your question. But we don't have much power when it comes to certain development controls and parking rates are most definitely one of them.
It kind of doesn't answer the question because we would be left with that problem if every single unit holder had a car and they were to park legally. We're stuck with that problem, no one else. That's where the issue lies because I've been to that street. I've seen the parking situation. If someone parks on both sides of the street, it's chaos. Add another 31 cars on top of that. It's unacceptable. How are we going to be dealing with that? Because the problem is in our lap, no one else's. A specific example, how we can be dealing with it without generalizing through the CEO.
So just to get clarity, that this, I imagine, a co-living is covered under the State Environmental Planning Policy, so not the Liverpool LEP. So ultimately, the planning document is not a Liverpool council document. It's a state government planning document. In that document, it stipulates that if you have 39 units, you only need X amount of parking spots. In this situation, eight, right? So the reality is, if we go to court, we can't fight on that matter because they're abiding by the rules. So ultimately, councillor Stevsky, it's the rules that are not inappropriate. Sorry, the rules are the ones that are leading the situation. That's the reality.
I'll just add that through the CEO, a suggestion would be, if councillor minded to do so, to vote on an advocacy piece we could write on your behalf to the state government, advocating for maybe more specific parking provisions in restricted localities. We could consider some sort of an advocacy piece. So if you'd like us to write to the Department of Planning, that would be one way to try and lobby for change.
Is there any councillor, are you open to that, councillor Stevsky? Councillor, sorry.
Yeah, I'm open to that, but I still don't have an answer to the problem when it gets built. The people that are here tonight that live on that street, they're going to come into that problem. What solution are we giving them? We need to give them something without generalizing. We need to offer a solution. It's our problem now, yes. We didn't create the problem, but we're left with the problem.
Councillor, as policymakers here, what would you propose to direct the CEO to do? Or what policy would you like to create that will help the residents who are here today?
Specifically in relation to that one, if every, we need to look at, if every unit holder or the person that lives in that complex, 39 of them, if they were each to have a car because ultimately it's four or five kilometers away from a train station, I see this happening. I'm an accounting background, so I don't have any experience in this. I'd like us, through the relevant department, to find a solution to these residents because this will become a problem once it's built. And we need to be able to gather them and relay that to them, how this will be able to come. Because this will become a problem, I know that, I can tell straight away. But I just don't have a solution for them and that's why I put it on the agenda for us to come up with a solution so we don't impact their lives.
So your issue is relating to parking on the street specifically, right? And there not being enough parking in the actual development. So as I guess the director has mentioned, that there's an advocacy piece which doesn't help in this scenario, unless it can be done in a, after the fact, which would be challenging in itself. Then I think then the alternate then is looking at whether you, councillor, can put any parking restrictions on the street. I know in high-density areas, there are, you know, the parking permits and so on and so forth. But even if you had a, just thinking, if you had a parking permit scheme for residents, they would still qualify as residents and you couldn't. You know, that's pretty much your only, if you're, the concern is about parking. We get it, everyone, you know, everyone gets it when there's more development on the street, that parking does affect in such a low parking rate. But yeah, I guess our hands are tied as council when the state is setting the rules. All the state policy has been now, more and more, to take the planning powers away from council and putting on on CDCs and more density in areas without the proper traffic or parking studies. So this is, you asked, this is one issue and it's unfortunate that it's going to affect the residents here. But the reality is, there could be more of these popping up everywhere around Liverpool if the laws as they stand and the SEP isn't changed. Councillor Moon, did you have your hand up? And then I'll go to councillor Conneeb.
Perhaps if the mover and second would accommodate a point six to write to the state government about this issue and ask for recommendations based on them. Because at the moment, from what the Director of Planning have suggested and in her answer, is probably one of the only avenues we've got as a council is to actually write to the state government and create an advocacy piece to try and accommodate. I know this doesn't help the issue right now, but maybe it'll prevent it in happening in the future. In terms of this particular development, I understand that there's a train station literally about, I think, under a kilometer away from it, Walk, which is Kasula Train Station. I haven't actually.
I think he says four kilometers in his, in his notice of motion.
Four kilometers? No, I know it's a lot less than that.
Yeah.
So which way? Did you measure it, if you don't mind me asking? Yeah? Direct line?
Thank you, councillors. Can you put your questions to the chair, please?
Sorry. I've actually walked through there and I believe it's less than four kilometers. But if councillor has actually walked it and done the study, I beg to differ. But yeah, I'll take that. But I'm a resident of Kasula and I have walked from Kasula Train Station to Kasula Moor and it takes me approximately seven minutes. So if I can walk four kilometers in seven minutes, I'm doing a good job.
Okay. Councillor Conneeb?
Through the chair. Mr Mayor, point one of this motion raised by councillor Stevsky asks council to investigate and report on the reasons. Council conceded and did not progress the recent development matter. In brackets, 39-unit co-living proposal, close bracket, to be heard in the Land of Environment Court. And then, in response, the chief executive's executive officer's comment indicates that a briefing note in response to a councillor request about the determination of that on or around two October 2025, explaining how the development application and associated land in environment court proceedings were dealt with in accordance with the relevant legislation and planning controls. I've got two questions to the appropriate director. If the CEO can answer, then that's fine. If not, perhaps general counsel could assist. The first being, why was, I suspect, but the question's still asked and pressed, why was the objectors taken to the Land and Environment Court? And I can infer that obviously we're standing up for the constituents of Kasula in that regard. But was consideration given to the merits of commencing those proceedings prior to commencing them? That's the first question. The second question would be, was any advice provided to the constituents, being the objectors, as to the merits of that application as it was proceeding? Because obviously, the third question which may arise, but council withdrew, I suspect their proceedings, I'm just inferring that that's what's occurred and why they did that.
Hand over to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, Director of Planning and Design.
Thank you. Through the CEO, I'll try and keep track of the questions. In response to the first.
Um in response to the first question, so I I'll just clarify, the matter was resolved by way of a mediation, section thirty-four mediation, um which is highly encouraged by the Land and Environment Court, where an agreement can be met without proceeding to a hearing. Both parties are obviously represented by appropriate legal counsel. Uh this matter was resolved by way of a mediation, so it wasn't that a hearing was cancelled or withdrawn, it was that it was resolved prior to commencing to a hearing. And it was the case because it was conceded that the development as approved met all the necessary requirements of the SEP. And on that basis, and on the ad- advice of expert planners and technical officers as well as the legal counsel, we would make a balanced judgment as to the prospects of um winning any uh matter in a hearing in light of the fact that it is expenditure of ratepayers' money, so we would have to be well informed as to the prospects and as to the matters of contention that are outstanding before we make that decision. Um bearing in mind the costs involved, so in this case, the contentions were resolved to a point where council was satisfied. As I mentioned earlier, there are some controls that are outlined in the SEP that are not negotiable, so the law actually spells out that a consent authority cannot refuse a D A based on a number of controls, parking being one of them. And in terms of the question uh with respect to the constituents, there is a process whereby the objectors, uh written objections and representations of objectors must be taken into account. So the council officers will assess the objections and the points raised within, will provide a response to each point, and that will be unpacked in in that mediation process, and where council officers believe there is a um within the realm of the law, there is a um a change or an amendment that can be made to address a contention, then we will do so, um if that control is flexible enough, so as as an example, there might be a concern about overlooking, and we would uh in response ask for a mitigation by amending the window, so it prevents overlooking, but if I'm using an example of parking, those rates can't be amended under the SEP. Um so the constituents, written objections would have been considered and amendments made where appropriate. In terms of the question around, were the constituents informed? I'll take that on notice, because I want to clarify um that letters, as per the usual process, have been sent to the objectors. Um I don't want to say yes without doing the fact checking, because, you know, there could be administrative oversight from time to time. But the usual process is that all written objectors will receive a letter advising them that the application was determined, so in this case, it would be by way of a um section thirty-four, and it was approved, and there would be a link or some sort of a um a location for the um objectors to view the the documentation package associated. So I'll take that one on notice, so I can inform you as to the extent of which they were notified. I hope I haven't missed anything.
Uh the only other question I wanted to ask uh through the chair, Mister Mayor, um either to the C E O or the appropriate director, there's a reference to a briefing note um being provided upon a council request. Was that briefing note or explanation as to the decision, whether it eventuated through a mediation or otherwise, at least provided to the constituents who raised objections? One would think that it would be necessary to ex- at least explain the legalese behind the determination, whether or whether or not it was pressed by council, and whether or not a mediation resolved in a settlement, and why that occurred, because you can trust that the concerns by the people of Kasula, in particular this street, is not just the issues that councillor Restevsky raises in respect of parking, but the issues of them purchasing family homes in a street um where most have all lived there for quite some time, to then have a scenario whereby they're dealt with co-living thirty-nine units and the limited aspect of the eight car spots, not to say that that doesn't necessarily comply with the requirements, but in amongst that, that naturally causes congestion in the street, concerns as to the the new people that are coming into the street, the ambience of the street and um and and how it's how it's now constructed. Um so I I think at the very minimum, if that briefing note wasn't provided to um the the constituents, first of all, has it been provided, if not, um can it be? Because I I I think naturally um they would want to know why and how, um particularly um noting that they raised objections and and where it's ultimately ended up.
Thank you, through the mayor, we can't answer the question whether it was or wasn't, but what we will do is um we certainly understand the residents' concerns and councillor Conib, the intent of your question in support of that. And we will discover that briefing note and make sure that the rationale for the decisions the council made in relation to that development are explained to uh the affected persons forthwith.
Um one final question, that briefing note, can that be circulated to all councillors, because I've just gone through my emails um for on or about the second of October of twenty twenty-five, and I can't see receiving a copy of it. Um I'd be interested in receiving a copy of it, given I did place a question on notice about the development some time ago.
Yes, thank you, through the mayor, um I do I do know that the report, including my comments, says the briefing note can can uh be circulated to all councils if required, so we'll we'll undertake to do that forthwith.
I just have one final question, um through the C E O to the director. If we conceded at conciliation so easily, why did we go to court in the first place? We must have had something that we were confident on to win the case.
I refer to the C E O.
Through the C E O, so the.
Just just that we'll do it, the process properly, yeah, thank you, through the mayor, uh director of planning.
Through the C E O, the applicant lodged an appeal against council, so it wasn't instigated by council. And we don't um.
Sorry, as a deemed refusal?
As it, oh, I have to check that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to check that, I assume it's a deemed refusal, but I want to do a fact check, so it's a class one appeal. And it's not about not going to a hearing, so yeah, giving up on that so easily, it's about being advised on the prospects of winning and whether we can come to an agreement before going to a hearing, which would save both parties a lot of costs if if our requirements can be met before it goes to an actual hearing.
All right, so now there's been a suggestion, I think, did it did it actually go up there about adding adding a point six about advocacy piece? So it doesn't happen again, uh councillor Restevsky, uh are you happy to add that as your um to uh to your motion? Yes, and councillor, are you happy to accept that as a second, or yes, okay, great.
Can I just ask one final question, sorry? So the things that we've spoken about that have come out through councillor Conib and others about the briefing note and and having that explanation sent through to the um objectors, is that captured in your your points there councillor Restevsky, I just want to make sure that we have captured all of that?
Uh no. Thanks councillor McNaught for raising that, because I was going to suggest that what should be included in this, that a memo or a briefing note be provided to all the objectors and all the residents that are impacted by this development, to explain to them exactly the steps council took and exactly uh how it was resolved by, how it was resolved in mediation and the steps taken and and essentially, because as I understand the answers to the question, is that council formed a view based on whether internal or external legal advice, uh that there was limited merits um in the case at all, so I I think the residents have a right to know this, and when we're talking about saving ratepayers' money, particularly ratepayers, um whether or not we're we're pursuing prosperous legal matters. People of these these this street and and surrounding streets pay rates, um and if they're objecting to it, then there's a um in- inferred within that is that we we fight for what they object, because they're paying their rates, and those those legal matters will be funded for by by those rates, so I I just think that they have a right to know, and and that briefing note should be provided to them, not just us councillors.
So I think seven, uh it it should say send rather than receive, send a memo briefing note.
And I think that potentially that briefing note will probably incorporate some of the other other points as well, but it doesn't hurt to have it there, I guess, twice.
Yeah, and we don't have to s- o- overcomplicate point seven, I think the the point the point is understood. Um and I just think just just for future reference as policymakers, that um you know, the uh with the way that things are going, with more use of the SEP um in 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 making decisions where people uh uh still have the perception that councils vote on D A's or councils actually have much to do with D A's, which we don't, that maybe we look at our um our legal policy, because uh it almost should go should also be a given in a sense that if something happens in a street where it's gone through court or whatever it may be, that at least we can go to the community and say, well, this is where our position is, and this is what happened. Um uh so that they they at least know so, but if we cover that and the policy change, then it can happen as an automatic thing versus having to raise this every single time. All right, well, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declare unanimous.
So we'll now move on to operation or reports. So that's op one, two, three and four. Operation zero one, asset management uh policy re-adoption, page three hundred and fifty-eight. Sorry, three fifty-nine, um tab thirty-seven, with a recommendation on page three hundred and fifty-nine, councillor McNaught.
I'm happy to move as per the recommendation in the book.
Move councillor McNaught, do we have a second, councillor Harald?
I've just got a couple of questions on that one.
Yep, would you like to speak for your motion councillor McNaught?
Uh no, just I'm I'm happy with what was presented to us in the comments, thank.
Councillor Restevsky, questions?
Uh do we know how how large the current um infrastructure backlog is? Um what the dollar figure is in the timeframe to to fix that, do we have those figures available tonight or no?
Your questions to the C E O?
Sorry, my apologies, yes.
Thank you, through the mayor, difficult question, uh the the nomenclature you used, infrastructure backlog? Or you're talking about a renewals backlog, uh what are you talking about existing infrastructure, what's the question?
Mainly around local roads, footpaths, playgrounds, uh facilities scheduled for repair, um expected timelines, that kind of stuff.
Yes, thank you, I understand now, so this is included obviously in our capital works programme and renewal programme, which are of course um uh public documents, um uh there there will always be carryover of works, um but the these are typically prioritized by the operations uh team as are as they relate to uh necessity, the delta of which is is difficult to um to to take any uh guess at at any one point of time, because it's such a fluid uh process, but um certainly um we're doing our um Q one budget review, and I can certainly advise council after that if we're slipping uh as to the cadence of our programme.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against declare unanimous. Next item is operation zero two, Liverpool Waste Committee Charter, charter, page three seventy-four, tab thirty-eight, recognition.
I I move that way, and I just had two questions.
Yep, move councillor Restevsky as a second, councillor Har- Harald, I'm Harald. Uh yes, councillor Restevsky?
I I think the original motion had a representative or a delegate from the U S U to also sit on the uh charter, but I couldn't see that anywhere in the um in the charter, is that an oversight or if I can get an explanation through the C E O?
It's not an oversight.
Uh al- ultimately councillor, it's a, when when you say uh the U S U, there are council staff members who are a part of the U S U, uh or there's actual the U S U U S U itself, and then begs that this is a um a committee of council. Um and I think the only people that we can actually put on there is the C E O as such.
If you go back to the original motion, it was worded in there precisely, and it was passed, so um if we can bring the original motion up, and we actually had the uh initial committee uh council members also approved at the initial meeting, it probably doesn't need to be included in the charter, but I'm I'm sure that they will, when the first meeting's called, those three councillors would be uh invited to participate.
Um so I think councillor, just uh I'm I'm gathering from the C E O's response that, you know, it's in it's there there is no ability to put a member from the U S U on there, is that where, even though council resolved it's and it may have been um my fault for not, you know, for calling it um uh is uh lawful or not, but I'll just get some clarification on uh at the time. Well, I'll just pass over to the C E O.
Yeah, thank you, through the director of operations.
So councillor, the charter did go before council previously, and then it did get uh it was deferred to be taken to a governance meeting, uh that did occur. Uh then feedback was received from the councillors at that governance meeting, and that was all compiled and then sent back for review by our legal team. And the position on the policy is what you have before you, um so that is what is there.
Through the C E O, um the governance meeting can't make decisions on behalf of council, and the decision, the original motion, was passed by council. If you refer to the original motion, no one has mentioned anything about that since that motion has been passed, if it's legal or illegal. Um if someone could bring that up tonight, that'll be good, if not, I'm happy to take that on notice.
I'm I'm assuming that can't happen, it it needs a few minutes for that to happen, so the the staff can take it uh uh on notice, or we can just defer this to the end of the meeting, give to give them some chance to look into it. Yeah, would you happy, defer it to the end of the meeting or, okay. All right, so if we can change the the resolution then, please, that we just move that it gets deferred to the end of the meeting, councillor Harald, are you happy with that? Yep, okay, if there's no discussion, I'll put that, all those all those in favour, deferral to the end, raise your hands, against, that declared carried.
Next item is operations zero three, Livcom Awards Invitation, page three eighty-nine, tab thirty-nine, with a recommendation on page three hundred and eighty-nine.
I have an alternate motion.
Uh yes councillor, what's your motion?
Sorry, guys, I didn't e- email you this one through, but um one, council acknowledges the significance of the Livcom Awards nominations and congratulates staff on their achievements. That's point one, point two, declines to commit to international travel at ratepayers' expense. Three, any councillor can attend, however, their travel costs are borne by them individually. Four, the council continues supporting circular economy projects, but prioritizes local ratepayer value, financial responsibility and transparency.
We'll just wait till number four gets on the screen. Just clarification on point two, can you Just clarification on point two. Can you just clarify on that, please? I'm just.
Um, well, this event is in Turkey, I believe. Basically declining to commit to international travel at ratepayers' expense, considering we've just delivered a ten million dollar deficit.
Yeah, okay. So we're just saying the report's not calling on any councillor, anyone to go.
Well, the report I'm saying is any councillor can go.
Yeah, but I was just saying on that, like, this is, yeah. This is a matter of saying, if the CEO wants to send his staff, we can't tell, we can't prevent him from sending his staff. Are you saying that you want to prevent him from doing that?
I believe if he wants to do that, it should come back to a council meeting.
I'll just refer over to the CEO for a moment, please.
It sets a dangerous precedent, councillors. It's in contravention to the the policy. Having an open comment like that, i- if if and there's no, there's no, there was no recommendation that we send anybody at this stage. But if we were to send anybody on international travel, it's a matter for the CEO and it's an operational matter and to say that you declined to commit to international travel at ratepayer expense, everything's ratepayer expense. And the, I think it's the civil expenses policy. It's clearly in contravention of that.
Yeah. So on your point, councillor Stevsky, relating to the civic expenses policy, if a councillor were to go, then yes, ask reported to council if the council wanted to use, wanted council to pay for them to attend. So I guess once again, the point of the report was if the CEO is gonna, the staff are gonna get an award and the staff go there and do it. So there's that. And then point three, obviously, any council can go wherever they want and do what they want, but representing council, that's a different, that's another, that's a different story. You can't just have any council just go and represent council.
I I should just forecast councillors that I have no intention of sending anybody to Turkey. The way some of these awards are constructed is that they they nominate a delegation and you can only participate in the award ceremony if you attend without a guarantee of success. If there was a residual commercial value, that that would be something, if we won the world's best circular economy tiles and it gave us a commercial advantage in the local market, that's something I might consider. But at this stage, nobody began to Turkey. So and I'm just reluctant to set precedent umbrella.
So McNaught or councillor Harald?
Yes, I I agree with with your comments the CEO made. I find that is a dangerous precedent. On the basis, if council staff develop, say, a unique process that is award-winning worldwide, I would expect them to be able to go to wherever to promote what they did. By declining to allow that to occur, I think that's a dangerous precedent and I will not support that.
Yes, I just need to get clarification whether whether we're even allowed to do point two, whether point two is lawful. I guess that's why I haven't asked for a second yet. As if you're saying that the point is that it's operational. Correct me if I'm wrong, you use the points. You have, council has a fair few points.
Yeah, there's other matters before council tonight. We have had a very, very clever points banking strategy, all credit to the current CFO, about how we've created a bank of Amex points. To the extent that the next twenty five international trips would cost me nothing other than incidentals and a per diem.
So I think, councillor, if you can add to point two, declines to commit councillors to international travel, then that would be appropriate. Would you like to add that? Okay. All right, good. So that's good. One, two. Yeah, and attending, it's just clear as long as attending that they're not representing council.
I believe we need to identify that in point three.
What, how would you like, how so?
If any councillor can attend, however, they'll be attending in their personal capacity, not as a councillor. Why? You're saying any councillor can attend? Yeah, but they're not in their personal capacity, not as a councillor, because if you're attending as a councillor, that means you're representing council.
Well, I think it's the.
That's the understanding, so.
I think I think the the point is about being, you're actually representing council. And that's the, that's the.
It makes no reference to representing or not representing council. I think it's pretty clear that they'd just be attending.
Yeah.
It's not attending as a representative of council, but is attending.
That's correct.
I think it's quite clear that they're not attending as a representative.
Yeah. All right, cool. So is there a second for this motion?
Yes, I'm happy to second it.
Second at councillor Carney. Okay.
I think just one point, just on what you said earlier through the chair, Mr Mayor. You said that, of course, if if there was to be a councillor or yourself, the mayor or deputy mayor to attend overseas travel in line with their obligations and duties in their roles, that that would come before council in terms of them representing the city. So therefore, this is just any councillor can attend if they choose to. But of course, if they're being sent to represent the city, one would expect, like you indicated, it would come before council.
If it's a matter of getting funds from council to do it.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
And and we were to obviously make that decision for whatever purpose a particular councillor or mayor or deputy mayor goes and fund it through whatever budget it would come from. Yes.
Yes. Councillor McNaught?
Sorry, just to pick up on a point there and then I would like to move a foreshadowed motion, but if, and I I appreciate exactly what councillor Carney just said, but by passing point two, does that not then mean that we have a motion, we've passed a motion that says we decline to commit councillors to international travel at ratepayers' expense? I don't know how we can have that and then also have the situation that the councillor just spoke about where we would find a budget to cover that. It just doesn't work together.
International travel in relation to this event.
So you want to add that on to the words? Councillor Kristewski, are you happy with that? Yes. So at the end of point two, for this event. No worries. Oh, good. Councillor McNaught, you said you have a foreshadowed motion?
I do. I have a foreshadowed motion. That is just the motion in the book, please.
Okay. Do you have a second for that? Councillor Moon? So your foreshadow is the recommendation.
I also, sorry, I also have a question about point four in the original motion. I'm just, I I just think that the way that point four is written there implies that, and and while I think our circular economy team is absolutely amazing, it implies that financial responsibility and transparency are not forefront of mind at the moment and I have a problem with that. I think it's teetering on. It shouldn't be, shouldn't be written like that.
Yeah, thank you for raising that. So can you maybe get some clarification on how you want to say that, councillor Stevsky? Because I think when you put the word but in there, councillor McNaught raised a valid point.
I'm sorry, what's the point?
So when it says council continues supporting circular economy, so we know we have circular economy, we know it's an obligation that we have to do with regards to FOGO and everything else, but prioritises local ratepayer value, financial responsibility and transparency. So I, but it's saying, so it's reading in that, well, circular economy isn't being done transparently. It's not being financially responsible enough.
It's prioritising local ratepayer value, financial responsibility and transparency. It's not saying that, it's not saying that those things don't exist. It's saying that we prioritise spending that money responsibly, transparently.
So councillor AJ, just through the chair, please.
By that logic, saying that we support doing a particular thing would imply that we don't support it currently.
It wouldn't, is a bit off, clear if it says and continues. It's the same.
So and prioritises.
Yeah. All right. Is any further discussion? No, okay. If there's no further discussion, move the motion first, as moved by councillor Stevsky. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against declare a loss, sorry, declare carried.
Division.
So the foreshadowed motion lapses then. Yep. All those in favour, please stand. Those against? Next item is operations zero four floodplain management policy, water management policy, page three ninety three, tab forty with recommendation on page three hundred and ninety four.
I'm happy to move it as per the book.
Move councillor McNaught? You have a second or second councillor Moon? Any discussion? Councillor Hart? Harald?
Yes, yes. My obvious objections to the the stormwater channel system that the Water Board, for want of a better term for them, wants to change current concrete line channels into going back to nature, which I obviously object to because it just doesn't work and it's going to cost council millions of dollars in maintenance and so on. So my objection to that.
Is there any other discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against declare carried. Just have me have a look at. So now we'll go back to the planning items. Just have me have a look at, so now we'll go back to the planning items. So just mindful that, just mindful of the time, I might just call a fifteen minute recess before we head into the, before we head into these items, so.
If we can get back to our chairs. See now where we're planning, 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 planning. Wonderful, wonderful.
All right, thank you everyone, I declare the meeting resumed. Um, we'll now move on to planning reports, first item is PD 01, draft planning in Edmonton Park Town Centre, page 136, tab 5, with recommendation page 137. I'm happy to move this way. It's been a second councillor Harald.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes councillor Restewski.
Uh, the fifty four million dollars in contributions, um, has that been independently verified by a value that council is appointed or is it based on figures supplied by the developer?
So your question is to?
The CEO through the relevant director.
Yeah, thank you for the question councillor, through the mayor, um, director, planning and design.
Thank you, through the CEO. The total figure is a combination of costed items within the contributions plan, as well as items outside of the plan, which have been verified by council. So the costings for those that are outside the plan have been verified by council.
And do we have, uh, timelines of when each park, community facility, intersection upgrade will be delivered and is there any penalties if the developer delays it or withdraws?
Your question is to?
Same, through the CEO, through the director.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can look after this one, thanks councillor, it's a good question, through the mayor. Uh, this is a twelve year old VPA, so we worked very hard, looking at our historical VPA's to get this one over the line, got a better result. And a very comprehensive design and programme of works has been developed, now we'll bring that to council. Within that, um, within those commercial terms, um, there may be, um, commercial instruments like retentions to incentivise, um, the development, but the, um, the programme of works will be something that we'll bring to council, uh, and take them along the journey to make sure that, uh, what we're getting built in the right time. Again, this was a twelve year old plus, I think, director, VPA, which I'm really happy that we've got over the line now.
Just one final one, I'm just, I don't know if we have an answer to this, but we've got all these, um, high density developments, um, uh, getting approved, the train station car parks full, our roads are congested, uh, you know, we, we don't have the infrastructure, but we've got this approval process. Is there a solution to this or is this going to be an ongoing, um, issue for our residents?
So your question is to?
The CEO.
Yeah, another good question councillor, through the mayor, I guess it goes back to the original, um, discussion with the residents from. I guess it goes back to the original discussion with the residents from council around density, transport-orientated design and how we accommodate for the vehicular access, which is now required for families in the South West because clearly there's not enough metro lines or other forms of transport to prohibit people having one or two or three cars per household. There's something, again, I think, is found in the instruction of point four of your original motion is to that lobby letter and to make the letter to the government inclusive of these kind of planning challenges.
Councillor Haral?
Just a comment on all of that. Edmondson Park now has two substantial car parking stations. A new one has just been built. And I go to Edmondson Park quite often and you find that the streets are full of cars everywhere. And yet the car parking stations are not full. So it's a matter of convenience. And I think what council might want to look at is restrict the parking in the streets to certain hours, four hours or six hours, to prevent people using the streets as a convenient means of parking rather than use the free car parking stations. I think that's an issue that maybe needs to be looked at.
Thank you. We'll take that as a comment. Any further discussion? I'll just on the right of reply, I just want to thank the CEO and the staff for getting this done. There are many people in Edmondson Park who have been patiently awaiting their park. And it's glad to see that we're a significant step closer. And I think the challenge with negotiating something for values 12 years ago, while values have changed and, you know, it's sort of chasing, constantly chasing. As a park, yes, getting that. So it's, yes, it's very, very close. So I just want to say thank you for getting this done. And we look forward to getting the residents their park ASAP and all the other associated infrastructure, which is quite of a significant value in this document. So that being said, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against it and declare it unanimous. Next item is PD 02, planning proposal, lot 2, New Bridgeland, Moorbank, options report, page 153, tab 26, recommendation on page 154, councillor Hart.
I'm happy to move the recommendation with just one slight amendment.
Yes, so. That is?
Amendment is in point three, after technical studies. Comma, and shares all previous studies commissioned by council with the landowner. That's it.
Do you have a second, second councillor, Haral? Is there any discussion? Councillor Ostevsky?
He's got his microphone. Oh, here we go. Just wondering why we're considering industrial use instead of public open space or environmental restoration, considering that this land is flood-prone and contaminated and sits next to the Georges River.
Your question is to who?
CEO.
Thank you. Through the mayor, director, planning and design.
Thank you, through the CEO. This was progressed off the back of a council-endorsed resolution to consider an option for light industrial on that site.
Sorry, when was that resolution?
Sorry, your question is through who?
Sorry, CEO.
Thank you. Looks like we have our subject matter expert who might be able to take the stand here and answer some questions as we move forward. Mr Hannon?
Much nicer than taking the stand here.
Yeah, I wouldn't go that far, but through the CEO. July 2023 was when it was put forward.
Well, ultimately, through the CEO, the making a public open space would require council purchasing the site from the private landowner?
Through the CEO or via a VPA, which is what we're recommending as well.
So through the CEO. And in essence, the council would have access to significant open space, significant amount of river land back in a VPA, you know? And then the community doesn't have a concrete crushing facility on site.
Yeah, through the CEO, yes. The recommendation would be for a portion of land to be acquired that would allow a shared path to go from end to end. So there'd be connectivity with Lieutenant Cantello, Cantonello Reserve to the south and up into the north as well. So that'd be the recommendation to Georges Cove Marina.
Is there any further discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Next item is PD 03, page 171, tab 27, recommendation on page 172.
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor McNamara. Seconded councillor AJ. Any discussion?
Yes, a couple of questions through the CEO. I noticed there was only three public submissions. I'm just concerned out of 240,000 residents, how did we only get three submissions? And I remember for the budget, we had about 180.
Thank you, through the chair. I mean, I guess the simple answer is we got three because three people responded to the public submission opportunity. I guess underlying that question councillor may be an intent that are we doing enough as staff to tell the community about these public submissions? We have a process, we have a platform and we have a portal and we received three.
I've got a foreshadowed motion, which I'm going to email through.
Whilst you're doing that and they get it up, can I just ask through the CEO? With the recent changes proposed by the state government, is this, is there not going to be a template participation strategy? And is anything you can line us about that, Mr CEO?
Thank you. Through the mayor, no, but I will take that on notice. Director or Mr Hannon, our SME, will take it on notice. We'll take it, stay there, we'll take it on notice. And when that information comes, we'll certainly share it.
Thank you. Do we have the foreshadow motion? Do you have a second or for the foreshadow motion? Seconding councillor Monahan. Okay, so we'll go back to the motion as moved, the recommendation. Is there any councillor, is any further discussion on the motion? Would you like a right of reply?
I'm happy to speak for the motion, the initial motion. I want to thank staff for the extensive work that they've done on this community participation plan. We've had multiple workshops and briefing sessions and I'm really grateful for that and being able to have that input. I think we've done some really great work to get it where it is and I commend the staff again for it. And I ask my fellow councillors to keep that in mind when we're voting.
Okay. If there's, we'll now deal with the, that was the right of reply. We'll now deal with the motion, the recommendation as moved by councillor McNamara and AJ. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Division, all those in favour, please stand. Those against? Next item is PD 04, post exhibition report Liverpool LEP Amendment 2008, sorry, LEP 2008 Amendment 87, at lot 1, 146 New Madrid, Moorbank, Georges Cove Village. Page 207, tab 28, with the recommendation on page 208.
I'm happy to move as per the recommendation.
Is that covered in the division? Oh, before that, sorry. From my understanding, everybody voted for it except for councillor McNamara. So yeah, page 207, tab 28, recommendation page 28, councillor McNamara.
Happy to move as per the recommendation.
Do you have a seconder? Seconding councillor Amun.
I've got one question for the CEO.
Yes, councillor McNamara, would you like to speak for your motion?
No, again, just to thank staff for working through this. It's an important, an important update that will service better the community of Moorbank and the emerging community along the Georges River there. So I thank staff for the work on this.
Councillor Ostevsky, your questions?
Once again, this one received actually zero public submissions. I'm just getting concerned about the way we're presenting this information to the community and whether they're informed properly. It'd be nice to get a briefing session on what's being done at the moment and workshop some ideas to get some more submissions through because I'm just not comfortable with something like this that affects people in the particular area that I don't live in, but I can't see any submissions.
Thank you for the question, councillor. It looks to me on page 209, paragraph five, four, council received eight submissions. There's a graph there in relation to the submissions as to the concerns raised in the submissions on page 209, of which the highest concern was three people or three of the submissions spoke to traffic congestion. Two of these submissions, limited amount of retail, albeit this is a retail development, so it's a remarkable one. And the other ones were one, one, one and one on shopping trolleys over development endorsement and mechanisms. So double the amount of the previous paper with eight submissions.
My apologies, I actually did misread that. You are right.
All right, any further discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against. So just clarifying, there's only one vote against? Yep, because it gets recorded that way, it's a planning matter. Next item is PD 05, post exhibition report, 1411.
Mr Mayor, I've declared a conflict of interest on this matter, which I've furnished the CEO. It's non-peripery, less than significant. I know the managing director of the applicant, the company of the applicant, and I'll be leaving the chambers for the duration of the debate.
It's a less than significant, non-peripery, less than significant?
My apologies, through the CEO. This was the one I was talking about, received zero submissions. Just give me a second now. Come on.
All right, do we have a mover?
I'm happy to move as per the recommendation.
Do we have a seconder? Councillor Haral? It's you. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, councillor Haral?
Yes. Yes, I do attend the Ludanum Forum and nobody raised an issue there that I know of.
Thank you for bringing that report back from the west of the electorate. Councillor, I'm going to declare a non-peripery, less significant interest and I will stay in the chamber in that the person from EG is the president of the World Lebanese Cultural Union and I know him through his involvement in that. But it's a non-peripery, less than significant, I'll be staying in there. Any discussion? Any further discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. So only one against councillor Ostevsky. Could somebody please notify councillor Hart? To come back in. So we'll now move into, we will continue flowing in the agenda. So we'll go to community and lifestyles report, which is on page, com 01, flag and banner policy, page 280, tab 30, recommendation on page 280. Move councillor McNamara. Do we have a seconder? Seconding councillor Amun.
One question.
Any discussion, councillor McNamara?
No, thank you for the updated policy.
Yes, councillor Ostevsky?
Through the CEO. I didn't see any specific wording in relation to an Australian national flag being flown on Anzac Day and Australia Day. Would this policy be the right platform to mention that?
Refer to the CEO.
No, I don't, sorry, through the mayor. I don't think it is, but I'll just refer to director of community just to identify what policy that would be. That's in relation to protocols that exist at, expect councillor.
Thank you, through the CEO. This particular policy is around the representation of community events and everything else that happens.
representation of community events and everything else that happens within Liverpool. It's not used as a campaign for corporates, just for council and any externals like, and stakeholders that are engaged with council. In regards to your question around Anzac Day and flags and the like during that time, I would have to take that on notice, I'm not clear on if we have a policy position on that.
Can I move a foreshadowed motion?
Yes councillor?
So one will stay the same? And I'm just adding some more points.
You have them in writing or you? Oh, this came up, yep. What do you mean by principal council-owned flag poles?
Sorry, just remove that word?
Principal? So my understanding is that we, we do have flags up on, definitely for Australia Day, or we have, we do Australia Day banners which go up for probably a month? So they couldn't go up just for the day because they, the expense is actually putting up and taking them down. And I think Anzac Day, we do normally do the Anzac Day one as well. So it's a matter of, I guess, the design as such.
Yeah, so I'm going to revert to the director of community, some of the Anzac Day celebrations were mandated by military protocols in relation to that ceremony, but I'll just refer to the director of community just to, to look at the validity of, of the res.
Through the CEO, councillor, we do promote those events through the flag poles, not necessarily using the flags themselves, but the event and what we're doing as a council, so they are highly promoted, Australia Day, Anzac Day, New Year's Eve is an example, sometimes if, we've done representation in Liverpool Powerhouse, et cetera, et cetera. So in terms of the, and we follow protocols at all the events in regards to flags and at the civic ceremonies, so I think it might be difficult to, to actually use the banners as the flagship, we would, I think we should use those as the promotion of the event, if that's what you're seeking.
Sorry, sorry, also councillor, just because we're not, that's not the question, the answer to the question, because point two talks about the Australian national flag and I assume councillor you mean the Union Jack and the Southern Cross. That flag shall, so I'm more interested not what's on banners promoting things, I'm more interested in understanding is your intent that the, our national flag shall, if that means always be, be flown at all council-owned flag poles at both these ceremonies, that's, that's what we're trying to deal with. So have you got any response to that or we're going to take that on notice?
I think I would have to take this on notice in terms of clarity, because like I said, we use the, the flag poles are used for the promotion banners, for promotional banners, to put the Australian flag in lieu of that would, I'm not sure if that can happen, I would have to take that on notice.
My understanding is the design for the CEO, the design changes every year, two years. Yeah, no, no, so I, you're restricting the design and then the design means you can't necessarily use that as promotion, promotion when you have a, because the flag is mandated and what you can do and how you can do it. Versus a banner which does contain the flag and, which has been done previously, previous years. So I just, councillor, like it's, it's a yeah, just mindful as there, considering staff are doing this and going above and beyond doing this. Your point A and your point B, you've got to incorporate costs, like is there a need for this? Because if you really drew on just on that data, put the flags up and flags down, there's, I don't know how many flag poles there are, I'm sure it's in the report somewhere, but there's, there's a significant amount, so.
As far as I know, the federal members of parliament do give away flags and I'm sure the relevant members of parliament would accommodate that.
It's not the capital cost of the flag, it's the operational cost of putting them up, putting them down.
Thank you, through the mayor, also, sorry councillor, but with our flag poles that display the banners, they're not configured to fly flags of the spec that you're describing. They're configured to display banners which are predominantly vertical. So that, that's going to be a challenge. The staff absolutely would support the intent here, but I just, it's just, it's in the construct of what you're asking us to do.
And we just put it in, let's come back with the report to see if we can make it work. Say by December?
Sorry, through the mayor, yeah, happy to do that councillor. As to the, yeah. As to the, regarding the capability, the capability of the current configuration of flag poles to meet the requirement that, and you can take all of two, right after the word that, all of two only? Yep, and put it after that and, and that should do it. Yeah, so, yep. That the, that the Australian national flag, so after that, get rid of the semicolon. It's small t, the, and just take that whole lot.
You put capability and cost? Because if we're doing it for one, if we're just doing it for the one day, then there is a, it would be a.
But I guess what I'm, sorry, through the mayor, I guess if, if the config won't meet the requirement, then the cost is, this is the next step, so i- if, if I come back to council and say we actually can do it councillor, then let's cost it and do it.
Okay, great, do you have a second there?
Question first.
Yep, councillor Harrell?
Question with that. The issue is, we have many, many so-called flag poles and most of them are actually capable of handling banners only. A flag, an Australian flag, needs to have the rope that raises them and lowers them, particularly on, on a day that you haven't got there is Armistice Day. You know, on that particular day, the flags have to be removed, moved to half past, so if you've got the vertical, horizontal, vertical, you can't do that. So in a sense, when we say all, we're really talking about specific locations where this can be done, you can't do it everywhere. I support the idea, we should certainly put national, but we need to change it, so you probably find there's only about 10 places all up, if that, where you really have a proper flag pole. So instead of hundreds, but that's just the point of view.
Can I suggest that councillor Stevsky in 6.1, it actually talks about the actual flag locations? If we look at those flag locations, that way we take the banners out of it? So I guess it would be, um, receives a report, the capability and current configuration of flag poles identified at 6.1 of the policy.
Councillor McNaul, are you happy to absorb this into your motion?
Yeah, I am, I think it's, yep.
Okay, cool, so then.
And if we could add Remembrance Day as well to that?
Yep, councillor Monahan, are you happy to accept that? Okay.
And sorry, if I can just ask one more question? If we're also, I, I assume through the CEO's comments, through Mr Mayor, that we would also in the report just be checking, because I know there are protocols around flags and everything like that, that would come into the report?
Yes, through the mayor, it would. I don't want to tie this up anymore, but six does to including but not limited to those flag locations, so we'll, we'll have a look, Light Horse Bridge is the most obvious example for me. Right, where the configurability wouldn't allow somebody to climb up and take these up and down on their side of the bridge, but yes, and yes councillor, we'll, we'll do a report, I understand the intent of what's going on here and the more Australian flags, the better.
Okay, so the, the mover and second are happy to adopt that as, as the motion? So there's no need for a foreshadowed motion? Is any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Next item is COM 02, suspension of AVZ Big Park for, for New Year's Eve 2025, page 322, tab 31, recommendation 323, councillor McNaul?
Happy to move that way.
Move councillor McNaul, second to councillor Hart? Any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Next item is COM 03, council granted donation sponsorship report, page 326, tab 2, with recommendation on page 326. Move councillor McNaul, seconded councillor Harrell? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare carried. We'll now move on to corporate services reports. Item, first item is Corp 01, electricity easement within lot 43, DP 485, Whitlam Ledger Centre, 90 Aman Way Avenue Liverpool, page 336, tab 33, with recommendation on page 336. Move councillor Harrell, seconded councillor McNaul, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare carried. Next item is Corp 02, investment report, September 2025, page 339, tab 34, recommendation on page 340, move councillor Harrell, seconded councillor McNaul, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare carried. Next item is Corp 03, code of conduct complaints, page 352, tab 35, with recommendation on page 352. Councillor McNaul?
Move that we note the report?
Seconded councillor Harrell? Any discussion?
I've just got a brief question about it. This matter is dealt with, sorry, this is to the CEO. Have code of conduct complaints been dealt with at the public inquiry?
Through the mayor, yes.
Noting some of the conflicts of interest that were declared in respect of other items that were dealt with at the public inquiry and noting that this is similarly dealt with at the public inquiry, my question is to you, Mr Mayor, will you be declaring a similar conflict of interest?
I've declared my conflicts of interest for today.
No, thank you, my question's to the CEO. Noting MOU 1 that passed at the 14th of October 2025 extraordinary council meeting, was any internal legal advice obtained confirming that this matter is appropriate, lawful and doesn't contribute to psychosocial hazard?
Yes.
Can a copy of that please be provided to councillors under confidential cover?
No.
Why not?
Because there's no document.
So was the advice in writing?
No, it's by exception, so when, when we have our meeting as to what I deem appropriate to put on the agenda, by exception, this wasn't mentioned, therefore it is deemed appropriate, therefore the advice is followed.
So no specific advice was provided from an internal source to confirm those matters?
No, I think.
Sorry, one second, your question is two?
No, and I, I think, again, I may be wrong here, but the, the, the metrics, this is a metrics document requested by council some many meetings ago. Or provided to council many meetings ago to update council on pure metrics and the costs associated with the metrics.
And the matter is, to the CEO, the matter is one that's been dealt with and is related to witnesses at the public inquiry, is that correct?
That's incorrect, it has been dealt with and the metrics have been dealt with, are still being dealt with in the current public inquiry. The bespoke individual line items are mentioned in closed session and are a deeper discussion in relation to code of conduct matters, whereas the metrics have been discussed in the initial phase by the council assisting as a precursor to the following dive on any individual or, this, this document doesn't talk to any particular code of conduct.
To the CEO, so were no metrics as to the number of code of conduct complaints discussed by any witnesses at the public inquiry?
Just me.
Just you, so it was discussed again to the CEO at the public inquiry?
The metrics?
Yes, and so it is related to witnesses at the public inquiry, that question's to the CEO.
The metrics are.
Yes. So was external legal advice obtained in relation to whether or not the matters? This item, rather, is, and this question's to the CEO, appropriate, lawful and does not contribute to a psychosocial hazard?
No, no external advice, but council staff would be very happy not to provide this document in the future. Erring on the caution of creating a psychosocial hazard, but also the work it takes to collate the metrics.
So the resolution that was passed by council on the 14th of October of 2025 has not strictly been complied with, that question is through the CEO to the deputy general counsel, is that correct?
Sorry, councillor's, councillor's questions can only be put to the CEO or the mayor.
Fine, the question's to the CEO, has, has that resolution of council been complied with?
I can't answer the question councillor until I see MOU 01.
I'll read it.
Thank you.
It's on page 92 of this, of this, this agenda.
Thank you. Motion of urgency, item number MOU 1, subject personnel matters. Council decision, motion moved councillor McNaul, seconded councillor Harrell, late council. One, affirms the importance of allowing the public inquiry into Liverpool City Council to take its natural course, ensuring procedural fairness for all witnesses, officers and stakeholders and maintaining the integrity of the process in the public interest. Two, resolves that council will await the findings and recommendations of the commissioner arising from the public inquiry and the final determination by the minister and defer making any further consideration or action by council on matters related to witnesses before the inquiry should only occur after obtaining independent legal advice confirming that such action A is both lawful and appropriate and B does not give rise to or contribute to any psychosocial hazard or risk under applicable work, health and safety obligations. Three, allocate any expenditure associated with obtaining independent legal advice from the general funds.
Thank you councillor, fully complied with.
In what way? To the CEO?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, that's my answer, it's fully complied with.
How was the?
Councillor Monahan, the CEO has answered.
It's a separate question, it's a different question, how was it complied with?
He's, he's answered your question.
He hasn't answered that question, it's a different question, not was it complied with, how was it complied with?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you councillor, through the mayor, absolutely, letter by. Thank you councillor, uh through the mayor, uh absolutely, letter by letter complied with. Um there is nothing to do with the uh metrics based um uh paper in these in these papers. Uh matters relating to witnesses, councillors particularly, yourself councillor Monahan, understands the intent of those four words and who that who that witness was and what those matters were. They were part of a motion to coun- or I'm sorry, it wasn't a motion to council, a proposed motion to council. It relates to matters relating to witnesses. That is, if a witness does or doesn't do something during the four thirty eight, we we would not take those actions in relation to matters relating to witnesses, not matters relating to the metrics around code of conducts.
It is a matter that is related to a witness. It is a matter that was related to witnesses giving evidence. It is clearly within the ambit of that motion.
Councillor Monahan, we're not in a courtroom.
No, we're at a council meeting. I understand where we are.
Great, and we have a question regarding metrics. Uh sorry, we've had, you've had your questions about, this is a ma- this is a question of metrics and costs. So great.
Were discussed at the inquiry. That was conceded.
That's great. And there's metrics and costs. Do you have any more questions about the metrics and costs of this report?
No, I have questions about whether or not council's policies have been complied with and respectfully, I don't think that they have.
Okay, well, that's that's for you to bring it up in the appropriate fashion as opposed to make it making accusations like you just have.
I'm asking questions about whether or not the report was prepared in compliance with a motion that was passed by council.
You've had that answer and he said yes.
I've had partial answers. I don't think that how it was complied with has been answered. Uh it was battered away as not being related to a witness at the inquiry.
Like, how long do you want to continue going about this? Ultimately, we have a question about metrics and data.
Question is answered.
Uh great, well, once again, well thankfully, like I said, you're not in a courtroom, the CEO has it.
Again, there's no need to patronise me about where we are. I'm quite cognizant of where we are.
And that's great. So the CEO has the option of either an- answering the question or taking it on notice.
Will will the question be taken on notice then? Because I don't think that was made clear.
Uh no, through the mayor, happy to answer the question now.
So how was that motion on page ninety one, ninety two, I'm happy to read it again, complied with that question is to the CEO?
Because I didn't need to take legal advice.
In your in his first answer, he actually answered that question. Yeah, he explained the process. Councillor Carnip?
Yes, I've got some questions. Through the mayor to the CEO. The resolution passed at the extraordinary meeting moved by councillor McNaul is quite specific. And I'm going to read point two, resolves that council will await.
Can I just confirm, are you speaking for or against the motion?
I'm speaking, I'm speaking i- i- in terms of this particular report, I'm asking questions.
Yeah, but are you for or against?
I will determine based on the answers.
No worries.
Now, it says that it resolves that council will await the findings and recommendations of the commissioner arising from the public inquiry and the final determination by the minister defer making any further consideration or action by council on matters related to witnesses before the inquiry should only occur after obtaining independent legal advice confirming that such a such action is either both lawful and appropriate and to B, which I won't read because councillor Monahan has already. When this motion was brought to council and was voted upon, these specific questions were asked. When it's matters related to witnesses, witnesses at the inquiry pertains to councillors who have lodged code of conducts. And that's been, it's it's not, it it doesn't matter, this motion, this 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 motion, there's no, it it's got nothing to do with reporting on metrics. The sheer fact that it refers, witnesses are inferred within code of conducts, code of conducts arise out of somewhere, they don't arise out of nowhere. They reside out of witnesses. Everybody knows in this room that point two specifically related to a witness before the inquiry. It was in respect of a staffing matter. And what was obtained in respect of that staffing matter that was debated at council was legal advice. That legal advice was obtained externally, not internally. And not not orally obtained.
Councillor, what is your question? This is my question. I'm not hearing a question. You're not speaking for or against and you haven't asked a question.
I'm going to ask a question.
Great, please, can you be succinct with your question?
I'll get to my question when I get to my question. My question is.
All due respect councillor, you either speak for a motion, against a motion, or you ask a question.
Mister Mayor, you keep cutting me off, you always cut me off, you don't cut any other councillor off, but you're cutting me off again today. This is her second meeting in a row. You've been patronising the councillor Monahan and you're shutting me up again.
You have been speaking for two minutes and you said, I'm here to ask a question, but you made a statement. I understand the English language.
Can I not talk and ask a question, can I not talk and ask a question, Mister Mayor? How's that for a question? Can I not talk and ask a question? Can I not talk and ask a question? Stop interrupting me. I don't interrupt you when you speak, Mister Mayor. Was independent legal advice obtained regarding this particular nom, this particular report being in the agenda through the through the chair and the mayor to the CEO?
I've answered the question.
The question is independent external legal advice, has it been obtained, yes or no?
I've answered the question, no.
It's it's not. So do you do you agree, Mister Mayor, through to the CEO, that point two of the resolution at the extraordinary meeting hasn't been complied with, has it been complied with?
No, I don't agree. Your interpretation is incorrect.
So the interpretation of of yourself through the mayor to the CEO is that it's been complied with. That is, that independent legal advice confirming that the motion is lawful and it doesn't pertain to witnesses before the inquiry. That's your interpretation of of the motion?
That's my interpretation of the resolution and its completion.
And the independent legal advice was obtained internally? Was obtained internally orally? Or you made a determination through the mayor to the CEO, the CEO made a determination that uh legal advice wasn't necessary?
No, I don't understand the question.
Was legal advice obtained by the CEO through general counsel or other mi- members of council's legal department, yes or no?
I've already answered that question.
Was it a yes or no? Well, if you could just answer it again, it's a yes or no.
By by the the matter was discussed with general with general counsel and through the legal services and corporate services team. And by default, there was no exception to the paper going up.
Do you consider internal legal counsel independent legal advice?
Absolutely. E- e- excellent, excellent track record, uber professional and the council should be very, very sure. Uh or have a high level of surety uh that their legal team are very professional.
Are we able to get that legal advice in writing?
That's impossible because I've already answered that question. It wasn't in writing.
Is there a reason we can't get it in writing?
There is. Nobody read anything.
Well, can we ask them to write the advice in writing?
Sorry councillor, can you lose your question too?
Through the mayor to the CEO.
Well, that's impossible, no, impossible. Because they didn't give any advice. Can you retrospectively ask for advice? If if this, I just want to clarify the question. You want me to retrospectively ask for advice about the non-advice? What what's the question?
Question. The question was, can we get advice about the motion that is before the floor and whether or not it complies with MOU two? Not whether or not we get advice about non-advice. You knew what the question was.
You're the council, you give me a resolution, I'll do it.
The the resolution's there. It's on page ninety one, ninety two of MOU MOU one of that last meeting. It requires, uh it 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 says uh that defer making any consideration should only occur after. Would that not mean require to the CEO?
Sorry, I've got the director of corporate services probably with some very salient information.
Councillors, it the councillors, the councillors, the um recommendation is merely to note the report and it's a rec- the receipt of statistics. Non-non-identifiable statistics, nothing more.
Through the CEO, I I understand that. It's a matter that is related to witnesses at the public inquiry, being code of conduct complaints and the number of them. That's been conceded. It's clear that that is a matter that the inquiry is investigating. If we accept that these are matters related to witnesses, my question is very simple. That council should have a should have obtained independent legal advice confirming that the item is lawful and appropriate and does not give rise to or contribute to any psychosocial hazard. That was.
So budgetary items, data, as the director of corporate services said, this is about data being provided.
Yes, the metrics, the numbers of code of conduct complaints which have been subjected to questioning at the inquiry.
This is just a statement, a fact of what council.
There's no debate.
So what what question would you like to ask? What, if you're going to brief council, external council on this, which is what you want, what are the questions to brief them on?
I voted against it. I'm asking whether or not council is complying with its own resolutions.
And you have answered from the CEO. And we've got, and then councillor Carnib's asked a similar questions and now we're back to you asking the same questions again. So.
Because I'm being prompted to ask the same questions again.
You've had the answers.
There seems to have been some confusion about what I was asking about.
I think you've both had your five minutes of of time of speaking. You haven't indicated what you're speaking for or against. The CEO has answered the questions and from this point forward, I think we have the answers. Anything else you can ask the CEO later on, whether in writing or the app- in the appropriate fashion, right? Does anybody else have any, does anyone want to speak for or against this motion?
I have a foreshadow nation.
Yeah, just one second. I've got to get a seconder because it doesn't, hasn't been recorded. I forget who seconded this motion originally.
Happy to second.
Yeah.
And I ask that the motion be put, please.
Hold on, there hasn't been two speakers for, two speakers against.
There's been two speakers against already. They've spoken for ten minutes.
Apparently, they they asked questions, so I don't know if they're for or against.
Okay, so after ten minutes of asked questions.
Yeah, they've asked the question. So councillor councillor McNaul.
I'm happy to speak to the motion, Mister Mayor.
Yep, speak to the motion and then we'll get the foreshadow motion by councillor SDC. Thank you councillor. Yes councillor McNaul. Thank you councillor Monahan. Thank you councillors. Yes councillor McN- councillor McNaul has the call.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um I'd like to thank the staff for the report that we did ask for some months ago and for continuing to provide that information that relates to the statistics um of code of conduct reports and I'm happy to have this received and noted. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rusevsky.
Benefit of my friend, that's one for. One more. I thought it was two, but that's okay. I have to give Amun a lot of assistance. Amun needs some too as well, it seems.
Thank you councillors. Councillor Rusevsky?
I'll I'll allow them to put it on the screen. Um whilst um I've just got one question to the CEO. I noticed um there's been forty five new complaints since the last report. We heard on evidence at the public inquiry that councillor Hardes submitted thirty nine. Is that the ones in this?
That's an inappropriate question to ask councillor. Alright, so. Can you just scroll down, please? Is there anything else? It? Do you have a seconder? Second to councillor Monahan. Councillor Moon, did you want to speak as a seconder of the motion?
No, I'm content, thanks.
Is going back to the motion, is any other questions regard, any other discussion regarding the motion? Councillor Harrell?
I'm happy to speak for the motion, the first motion.
Yep.
The report, as far as I'm concerned, does not identify any persons. And therefore, as far as I'm concerned, we should be able to accept the report as such.
Thank you.
I'd like to have the motion put. We've had two speakers for and two against.
There's been, there's anyone disagree that there are two speakers have spoken against it? No, it's okay. Well, there's been a motion, that the motion be put then. I'll put the motion as moved by councillor McNaul and seconded by councillor Moon. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against? Declare the motion carried. There's been division. All those in favour, please stand. Stretch the legs. Against? Thank you. We'll now move the. Next item is a committee reports, committee zero one, Minister's Civic Advisor Committee, page four thirteen, tab forty one.
Mister Mayor, I note that this is just a, there is not really a recommendation. It's just that, it's just a note explaining that there was no quorum and so I guess we just accept the information that's provided.
Yeah, receive a note then. So move that a receiver note, second to councillor Harrell. Any discussion? I'll put the motion all those in favour, against a declare carried. Next item is committee zero two, governance committee meetings held on the fifteenth of October, page four seventeen, tab forty two, recommendation on page four seventeen. Move councillor McNaul, second to councillor Harrell. Any discussion? I'll put the motion all those in favour, against and declare carried. So we have the confidential, um. So next we'll move into the confidential items. So conf zero one, page four, just let me, if everyone can get the confidential booklets out.
Mister Mayor, I just wanted to point out that some of the items in the confidential are actually questions with notice. So maybe conf O one and conf O two stay until the end of the confidential so that we're not going out of the order we said we would.
Yes, okay. Alright, so we'll do with the um conf zero three on page seven. Minister of the Sports Committee, held on third of September.
Happy to accept the recommendation.
Move councillor McNaul.
I've just got one question in relation to one of them.
Yeah, do we have a seconder? Seconder, the second councillor Moon. Yes councillor Rusevsky, your question?
Uh there's a donation to the Syrian Rugby League. Is that an overseas donation? Because I I'm the chairman of the Macedonian Rugby League and we're considered an overseas um, you know, you're representing the nation. Can I get some clarification?
I think it says on page eight that it's for line marking. So you want to make sure whether line markets and or line marking is in Australia or in Syria?
No, the entity, the Syrian Rugby League represents the country, Syria. Like, the Macedonian Rugby League doesn't represent Australia, it represents the Macedonian, country of Macedonia.
I'll refer that to the CEO.
Yeah, you'll notice, thank you councillor, it's a relevant question. You'll notice that the INC after Syrian Rugby League is an incorporated entity in Australia.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion all those in favour, against and declare carried. Next item is conf zero four. Acquisition of lots one oh one, one oh two, fifty Gerner Avenue, Austral. Any um? Anyone can move?
Move that way.
Move councillor McNaul, second to councillor AJ. Any discussion?
One question through the CEO. Um any reason why we're classifying the land as operational instead of community?
Thank you. Uh through the mayor, director of planning and design. So through the mayor, director of corporate services.
Through the CEO on the bottom of page nineteen, just before the financial implications. Uh it's classifying it as operational land. This is to allow flexibility in the future management of the land.
Thank you. I the ju- being operational land means it can be sold in the future, but if it was community land, it can't, is that correct?
Um my understanding is it can if it's very classified as. Um, my understanding is it can if it's very classified as operational. But, but being community per se doesn't prohibit it.
Any further discussion? I'll put the matter, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare carried. Next item is conf zero five, page twenty-one, recommendation on page twenty-two.
Happy to move, as per the recommendation.
Move councillor McNaul, second to councillor Harrell, any discussion?
One question through the CEO, we started compulsory acquisition according to this before negotiating, then we decided to negotiate. Did that add any unnecessary cost or delay?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Uh, typically not, I obviously will start the compulsory acquisition process, I think that's what you refer to, uh, quite early in the piece, because it takes some time. Uh, in the end, the market, the, the price is the price is the price at the end of the market. And we can talk about, everyone in the room can talk about things we should have bought ten years earlier. Um, but if that's the intent of your question, the process was done okay.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare carried. Next item is conf zero six, page twenty-six, recommendation on page twenty-seven. Move councillor McNaul, second.
I'd just like to, no, 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 I'd just like to make a comment, um, similar to what I did, oh, sorry, I'm happy to wait for it to be seconded.
Alright, move councillor McNaul, second to councillor Hart.
Um, noting that we are proposing, um, to change it to a public recreation in time, I would just like that obviously done as soon as possible.
Okay.
Which I'm sure staff already know, but just for the record.
Yep. Any further discussion? I'll put the matters, all the, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare carried. Next item is conf zero seven, page thirty-two, recommendation on page thirty-two. Move councillor McNaul.
Happy to note.
Seconder, councillor Moon. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Yes councillor.
Uh, I won't go into any detail, I'll just refer to page numbers and line items. Uh, but my question is to you, Mr Mayor, noting, um, matters raised earlier in respect of conflicts of interest. And particularly page forty-two, line item number fifty, which might indicate, um, someone or an entity that may or may not be known to yourself, but other councillors present, um, will you be declaring a conflict of interest? Fifty. Page forty-two.
Now, any other further questions?
No, no, that's the question, is, is there an answer?
I'll refer to the Code of Meaning Practice.
Thank you. Um, my question's to the CEO, same question. I can repeat it if you require it, repeat it.
Yeah, yes please.
Given conflicts of interest that have been made, uh, in respect of matters that are related to the public inquiry, um, noting the, uh, page forty-two, line item number fifty, um, may or may not be a person and or an entity that is, uh, or has been known, uh, to yourself. Will you be declaring a conflict of interest?
Thank you, thank you, through the mayor, erring on caution, um, I, I didn't see line item fifty in the document. Given, um, line item fifty, i- it's probably appropriate that I declare a, um, pecuniary interest, uh, and leave the chambers while this matter's being discussed because of that single item.
Thank you. I have one further question, uh, through the mayor, councillor Hart. Given, uh, previous.
Sorry, you have to wait till the CEO leaves the chambers before we can continue. Yep, go for it.
Uh, through the mayor to councillor Hart, uh, noting the conflicts of interest that have been declared previously in relation to matters that are related to, uh, the public inquiry. And noting page forty-two, line item number fifty, may or may not be an entity uh, that you have had associations with in the past, will you be declaring a conflict of interest?
Uh. Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Non pecuniar less than significant conflict of interest. I'll leave the chambers. Um. Given we're in confidential. Is this. We're not in closed session.
I think page forty-two, line fifty would be sufficient.
And the reason why is I've provided evidence relating to that organisation in the public inquiry. Staying in the chambers or say? Leaving.
Um, I've just got one, uh, further question arising from those answers, uh, to you, Mr Mayor. Do you think it's appropriate that you remain in the chamber to debate this item?
Councillor, every person makes their own, their own declarations as such.
The answer is yes.
Is any further discussion on this matter? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare carried, could you please inform the two?
Sorry, I'd like to call the division.
Yeah, all those in favour, please stand. Yeah, unanimous. Next item is conf zero eight, page forty-eight, with a recommendation on page forty-eight.
Happy to move that we receive and note the contents of the report.
Seconded, councillor Harrell.
Question. Through the CEO, um, any particular reason why this is in confidential when it's already been out in the domain?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Yeah, thank you, thank, thank you councillor, um. Yeah, it was, uh, published on the, the, the website of the entity described, it's just got, um, a, a number in it. Uh, so we, we typically, uh, err on the side of caution in relation to that, that kind of exposure. Uh, but quite rightly, um, and part of the legislation mandates that, that agency does call out the fine and the entity.
Just two question.
Sorry, I might, there probably some more to that, so director of corporate services.
Yes councillor, as it's, it's identifies, um, individuals.
So the, um, question I had was, um, what was the reason why we failed to notify them on time?
Yeah, um, again, E L T were only advised in the December as to the matter. Um, there was a, there was process failure, it wasn't by any intent, in fact, there's a long list of things done. Um, but my understa, the, the person over overall responsible, uh, is not with council anymore. Uh, so, um, but certainly if you look through the document, uh, the lessons learned, um, have been taken. Uh, pretty embarrassing for, uh, council staff. Um, it is a, it is a regulator, we understand our obligations, we're a self-insurer. And, um, we, again, we've put on extra staff in this space, um, and working hard to make sure that, um, these kind of, uh, issues don't re-arise.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare carried. And next item is conf zero nine, so just give the CEO a moment to leave. Move councillor McNaul.
Mm-hmm.
Seconded. Councillor Harrell. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, I have a question. To you, Mr Mayor, noting the subject matter, I won't go into any detail, given we're still open. Um, but it's detailed on page fifty-six, uh, of the book, will you be declaring a conflict of interest?
Thank you. Are there any other further que, discussion, questions?
Is that a no?
I'll refer to the Code of Meaning Practice councillor.
No, thank you. Um, my question through the mayor is to councillor Hart.
Councillor Hart's not in the room.
As, uh. Did he declare a conflict of interest in respect of this item?
I haven't heard a declaration of interest from him and they've all been, people have made declarations of interest. So it's usually, that's why we have it as a standing agenda item councillor.
Yes, the number of interests were declared late in the piece.
Yes, it does happen, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
That's why I'm asking.
Yes, well, you're asking to someone who's not in the room.
I know.
Yeah, great. Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm happy to, um, speak to the motion. I'm speaking against the motion. Um, I note that the, uh, matters raised on page fifty-seven and that there'd be no conflict between the existing role and the new role. Uh, or the, the purported new role, um, I still don't agree that it's in the interest of council to have, uh, this motion passed. If I could interrupt my remarks, uh, through the mayor to councillor Hart. Noting the, uh, matter that we are dealing with, page fifty-six of the book, confer, uh, confidential item nine, uh, and the person that is the subject of, will you be declaring a conflict of interest? No. I've concluded my remarks.
Any further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare carried.
Division.
Division, all those in favour, please stand. So we'll now move on to actually, we'll call a, um, ten minute, um, a recess till nine twenty. Thank you. Actually, we'll call a um ten minute um recess till nine twenty. Thank you.
Alright.
Nom zero one, page ninety four, tab one, recommendation page ninety four.
I'll move that way.
Move councillor Stevsky, have a second there.
Yeah.
Seconding councillor Monahan, any discussion?
I just, I I have um a suggestion if the mover and second are amenable, otherwise I might move it as a foreshadowed, but I just wanted to add a point um where we a- acknowledge so potentially a number one ahead of the other points, but I'll read it out first to make sure people are happy. Um, acknowledge this is the consistent and ongoing work of the City Economy Team in supporting small business across the LGA and beyond. And then in point three, I just wanted to add where it says, um directs the CEO to immediately develop and deliver a Small Business Month program in consultation with local chambers of commerce, industry groups, business owners. And I just wanted to add in there, and the City Economy Team, um considering uh but not limited to the following initiatives. If you're happy with that, just to, happy with that?
Alright, you happy with that councillor Monahan?
So do you want me to show you that text? That's easier, yeah?
Alright, does everyone understand the gist of it? If so. Alright, is any further discussion? Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Next item is norm zero two, page ninety six, tab two with the recommendation on page ninety six.
Move that way.
Move councillor Stevsky, do you have a second there?
Yeah, happy to second.
Seconding councillor Monahan. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the councillor for bringing this to the floor. I think it's a really good motion and um and I'm pleased that although it relates to the people of Wattle Grove, it actually covers the whole LGA, so I think it's a really good motion.
There's no further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Norm three, we've dealt with, so we'll go to norm four.
Um. Move that way.
Page one O one, tab four, the recommendation on page one O one.
Second.
Yep, I guess my question is regards to the lawfulness of this motion. I don't, you know, the first thing that the CEO's you, you, yeah, I I believe the motion is unlawful in its current form, um as it's directly relating to staffing matter. Staffing matters, um, so I can't see how the council can even deal with this. I don't even think, I don't think it should have been made into the agenda. My particular point of view. So councillor CFC, do you want to um maybe um work with us this work and provide it um to see how else we can do it? Because ultimately, staffing, hiring, firing, redundancy are, is a matter for the CEO. Um, and especially with the changes made to Loggaman Act last year in September, I think it was. With regard to structure, councils have, I guess, even before there was obviously the 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 requirement for, the legislative requirement for the CEO to, uh, uh. What's the word? That's just gone off my mind, with to work with council, consult with council with regards to the hiring and firing of senior staff, that is now gone. Um, and when I look at the intent of that, this is even uh another thing, so yes.
Um, if I could uh speak to to that point. Um, three, three, two, one, capital A, the general manager must after consulting the council determine the positions within the organisation structure of the council. The policy doesn't direct the CEO to determine positions. It's up to the CEO to determine the positions. What the policy is saying is that people whose positions are no longer required, determined by the CEO, ought to be offered the chance of another similar role. So roles that are to be removed for argument's sake are a senior special advisor. If that role is made redundant, then that person should be afforded at the opportunity uh to see if their skills fit the skills of another role within the organisation. Um, you know, for argument's sake, that that might be project managing. Um, that could be uh some other roles within the organisation. Um, I would think that that should be the position of council. It's not one that would infringe upon the CEO's determination of those positions. Um, but would offer people uh the chance to to move into a similar role. Um, of course, the understanding of that is if there are no similar roles, say the skill set of a senior uh special advisor don't fit uh with a project manager, for argument's sake, I'm using that um example, um then that person wouldn't be offered uh a similar role because there'd be nothing within the organisation that would match um that role. But of course, given the size and nature of this organisation, there would necessarily be some positions that are going to be made. are going to be made redundant, permanently so, with no necessary interchangeable skills. And that's an unfortunate position, but that's a realistic position. But I would say that it is lawful within that context. And I think there might have been some discussion on the other side of the room whether or not that is already the position of council, if that question could be asked to the CEO.
Yeah, thank you for the question councillor, just a couple of things on that. Absolutely, you are 1,000% correct. In fact, that's our policy. Not only is it our policy, it's industrial law, that we would offer redeployment where those skills can fit four fingers in the five fingered glove towards another opportunity redeployment. The actual term force redundancies, it's either a redundancy or it's not. Force redundancies implies by, that oh, it forced somebody to do something against either our policy or the act, and I wouldn't do that. The other thing, I've got just a couple of comments on the paper. Major restructures, on any, on any metric, we're talking about less than 2.5% of a workforce. That's the first thing. If we're talking about 973 staff, there's no impact whatsoever on service delivery. The concept here that vital roles would be at risk, well, councillors have been briefed on the fact that there was going to be 16 new jobs, eight in waste and eight in parks, as a direct result from taking top line heads out and putting him into frontline operational roles. Every part of the strategy in the, in the recut of the organisation returned jobs to the front line. And also, when we say things like uncertainty and staff morale, what affects staff morale is untested and inappropriate comments by other entities talking about staff loss, which gets people scared. The politics of fear is not something that we do here at Liverpool City Council. And when we said there were 93 jobs available, that was true. There was 93 jobs available and still are. And my, my intent here with the reorganisation was always to take jobs out of directors and potentially managers and put them back into frontline staff. And that is still the strategy. The concept that the officer, the CEO will take away staff again is nonsense because most of those people will be redeployed from current jobs if they, if they indeed fit, again, four or five fingers in the glove. An example of that is the property teams. We have a strategic property lead. And of course, we have property in the Old City Futures. Now, that director's been, that directorship has been folded down, but the people still exist and the roles still exist. So I just want to kind of balance this paper and concur with the councillor's comments in relation to redeployment.
So just one sec, just with regards to clarification. So once again, so we resolved the budget, we have a 2526 budget that talked about any redundancies. Right? The redundancies being creating, to create positions. So now with this, is it envisaged that all of those redundancies now stop? And then therefore the new positions don't get created?
No.
Councillor Ostewski?
What I understood from the remarks there was that this wouldn't infringe on what council is already doing. Is that people will be offered redeployment? Yes.
Can I just jump in? Because it's a good segue. That's true to the extent it becomes a budgetary consideration. If I make somebody redundant on day one of 356, I get to save 100% of their annualised wage. If I waited until after, and again, this is against the commissioner's own direction, own direction to me, to go back and keep doing the job in relation to structural and organisational design. If I waited six months or even nine months to the end of the commission, I could only then save three months of that expected budgetary implication. And that's where the two real issues lie. And all that money I was saving on 12 months, that's the money I would put into the new jobs.
So I guess once again, does this now, assuming, let's assume that it's even a lawful motion, does this now stop that process? If you can't make any way, if nobody becomes redundant anymore?
If it were, if it were, if council believes it is a lawful motion, yes, because I would expect ministers' decisions are in, even towards the next financial year, given the current cadence of the 438 and the way that the submissions, the draft, the return and the re-submissions on findings and recommendations, then the consideration of the minister, we're probably talking financial year 2627.
So to make this workable and consistent with council's policy, would it be amended, a proposed amendment would be to affirm council's existing policy of offering?
I don't, I think it's an approach.
Sorry?
I think if you're going towards the redeployment as first option.
Yes.
I think it's the approach. I don't think it's deliberate in policy, right? Albeit, it must, it only, it only, it's only referable to a redundancy.
Yes.
That you, yeah.
So it wouldn't be affirming council's existing policy, it would be adopting a policy of offering redeployment for any redundancy?
Well, once again, so council policy, yeah, council as a governing body doesn't have a policy on this and it's an operational policy. So that's why we don't have a policy. Internally.
I'll refer it to, Pat, hand over to you.
Thank you, Director of Corporate Services. Through the CEO, just kind of make a few comments. First of all, there is a statutory requirement for the council to review its structure within 12 months of being elected. So you shouldn't be trying to impede on that because there's a statutory requirement to do it. Secondly, the inquiry is not intended to inhibit council's functions, okay? Thirdly, the Local Government Act provides for where there is restructuring. For people who find themselves in a situation where they are redundant or their job is made redundant, that they can be offered something sideways or downwards, if it's available and they meet. So there's a legislative support for that to happen. And our understanding is that's also in the part of the award that that happened. So it's happening irrespective of us having a policy or not because legislatively, we can do it and it's an award, if I am correct, an award condition in any case.
To the CEO, if not, if you can't answer, then to the director. But council regularly confirms or reaffirms its functions and what it does. Having a motion that confirms council's legislative requirement and requirements under the, under relevant awards for offering redeployment to any redundant positions would not be inconsistent, one, with council's obligations and two, with what council's already doing. Is that correct?
Reaffirming practices is acceptable, I believe. So if something, so if this motion says something that council reaffirms.
Its legislative requirement.
Yes, legislative requirement under the act.
And any relevant awards.
And any relevant awards.
The CEO, it's not a requirement, it's a provision. You can, the council can offer it without having to, I think it's even without having to advertise, okay? So if, so if, as was the case with the, with the directors, the CEO had the opportunity to go out and advertise for all of the positions. Instead, it was offered to, for existing, three existing directors. The act has a provision to allow that. It doesn't require it, but it allows it. The award, I think, goes one step, one step further. The only, I guess, concern that I would raise with trying to put that motion that I think is trying to be put at the moment, is it will mandate it. And if the circumstances are that the person has the appropriate skill set and qualifications and the lot to fit in, that's not a problem. But if they don't, then it is.
But so just through the CEO, but this, by using the words reaffirm, so it's not a policy, it's just saying it's reaffirmed. So I, council's already doing that, the CEO, the CEO's already doing that. And council's just reaffirming and making a statement that is doing that. Does that impede?
Again, so long as, so long as it's, we're appropriate. Because if a position is made redundant and an appropriate position for that person who's made redundant is not available, well then we shouldn't be trying to put a square ping in a round hole.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at through the CEO is this is not a direction to the CEO where the first, the original motion is a direction, as in the form of a policy, let's say put aside lawfulness for the moment, where this is just saying, this is just more making a statement. So it's not directing. So in that fashion, does that, do you think that does that have any effect on operations?
I don't think so, but.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So I don't think a reaffirmation takes us too far either way. But if there's some, if the reaffirmation assures staff and assures that we're playing by the rules, then I'm happy to, well, it's not bad to me. It doesn't bother me.
I think that's the intent. So to reaffirm, the council reaffirms its legislative, oh, sorry, legislative obligations, yes. Delete under the act. Legislative obligations and any relevant awards. Um, in offering redeployment confirms its legislative obligations and any relevant awards in offering redeployment.
Hmm.
For any redundancies for council staff. I think that's, that's, that's the end of it. I don't think that achieves the intent without binding the CEO or directing the CEO to do a particular thing that is not within council's power to do and doesn't impede with what council already does and provides that reassurance for council staff.
Yeah, I think that's probably just as close as we can go.
The word offering might be a problem because when you say offering, that means you're actually going into the operations of council. I think we've got to change that word offering because you don't want to become part of the operation mechanism.
So I think even if it just says really relevant awards in, maybe redeployment for any redundancy of council staff, doesn't...
Look, I'm not going to speak for the mover, but I'm not budging on that word.
See, the question, the thing is this, when you say that council, it's not council that actually does that.
I was going to suggest that maybe a way around that, because I agree with you, Mr Mayor, is that we reaffirm the organisation's legislative obligations. Because that, because we're a group of elected people who are reaffirming a council operational process. So if, if as a group, we are happy to reaffirm the organisation's obligations, I think, I don't know whether that helps us, but I feel like that takes it a bit further away from the operations.
So how would you say that?
It's okay as it is like that, but I would just say reaffirms the organisation's legislative operation, obligations. Because when you're saying that council, you know, we're proposing that as elected officials. And what we're saying is that we reaffirm what the body of council is doing, but we're not doing it ourselves.
I'm happy with that. That provides that demarcation.
I'm content with that. I don't know about the mover.
All right, cool. Any further discussion?
To the, to the mayor, through the CEO, I think director have something to say.
Through the CEO, Director of Corporate Services.
Councillors, I just have two issues, I guess. One is that, you know, we're reaffirming statutory obligations. I mean, statutory obligation is a statutory obligation. You can reaffirm or disaffirm. It doesn't mean anything. But if you're going to say that redeployment to any redundancies for council staff where their skills and qualifications are fitting to the vacant position.
Where appropriate.
Where, well, yeah, but that's what the point, because.
Yes.
So that's there because this doesn't say that.
Yeah, I think that's the intent, but you're right. Having some discussions earlier about construction of motions, it's probably appropriate to put that in there.
So where appropriate at the end of council staff?
Comma, where appropriate.
The mover happy with that? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Next item is NOM 05, page 103, tab 5, recommendation on page 104.
Move that way.
Do you have a second there? Seconding councillor Monahan. Any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declare lost.
Division.
All those in favour, please stand. Against? So we have questions with notice left and there are two of these and confidential. And then what's up? Yes, these are all your, these are your questions councillor Ostewski? Any issues?
One question was question six, can I get an expansion on what you mean by personal reasons?
Through the CEO. Well, my interpretation of the paper is that the session was cancelled for personal reasons cited to the author.
Just thought if we can get an expansion on what those personal reasons were.
No, I don't think I can.
All right.
And just in relation to question. And just in relation to question seven, uh, it mentions assets. Um, what do we mean by assets? Showcasing Liverpool's assets? Potential investors. Is it our assets?
Eight or seven?
Uh, sorry, eight, my mistake.
Sorry, uh, through the mayor, uh, councillor, just take me to the page and preference. One oh nine. Oh, yeah, assets, uh, uh, in, in the true sense of the word. So all that Liverpool has. So it's, it's not defined as a physical asset. It's, it's all Liverpool's assets could be its human capital. Could be its intellectual capital, could be the robotics, could be the health precinct, could be the Eritropolis. It could be a whole lot of things. It's a generic commercial term. That was the intent of the word assets.
And just one question, um, why wasn't this brought up at the council meeting like the Hong Kong trip?
Uh, didn't need to, councillor.
Can I get an expansion?
Yeah, sure. So this, this, this trip, um, in relation to one council staff member, uh, attending the Anzook Forum in Riyadh, Saudi Arabia, was on the back of me personally being invited by Anzook. Um, I took a position that, um, given what's, uh, the, the, the environment that council's working in at the moment, that I needed to be, um, uh, uh, on and about the business. And so I thought the most appropriate person, um, was a, a person who's working essentially as the head of property and investment. Um, so that person was chosen by me on my invitation to, to attend. Um, and to do all the things that I've identified in, in, in the response. Total cost to council. Um, I've estimated his per deam for three days at two fifty, a day at seven fifty cash dollars, and the rest was on points. So the total cost to, to the rate pays is around, I, I'd estimate somewhere between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So I just wanted to draw a distinction between Hong Kong and Singapore. What was the distinction that Hong Kong came to council? S- um, and Saudi Arabia didn't. What was the distinction between the two?
Yeah, it, it's clear. So Ho- Hong Kong came to council on the back of either a paper or a mayoral minute for a civic visit by, from an invitation to the mayor. Okay, this trip came, uh, doesn't meet the criteria. So if a matter goes for a council or the, or one of the councillors or the mayors to attend international travel, clearly um, that is a matter that if travel is approved and paid for by council, needs to have the endorsement of council. With staff, i- it's not the same. It's, it's simply, uh, I get to allow, I mean, you'll remember that, um, Ms. Bono and, uh, um, the head of the library went, went to Barcelona a couple of years ago and uh, for the, for the, for the library thing. So we, 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 very fortunately, we get that opportunity to, uh, leverage opportunities. Um, on the back of, on the, sometimes piggybacking invitations from councillors and taking an opportunity, uh, but this one was too good to miss. Um, and any, any media reports or social media reports that there was multiple costs, I've seen up to fifty thousand dollars and three staff are just folly. There was one person, again, estimated cost six hundred to seven fifty. Um, and, um, that also required a set of preconditions. That those, those conditions was a pre-brief. Uh, the person went away with a very, very strong lead from me about what my expectations were in relation to his deliverables. Uh, and I'm expecting a report with the leads, uh, which are already starting to feed through back from, um, the Anzook. And I have not been debriefed yet on, on the, on the actual conference.
Uh, question ten, I just have a, I was actually talking about the lease incentive. Um, when I was talking about that, um, it, it clearly missed what I was trying to say.
Yeah, sorry, through the mayor, is there a question for me on that or?
Yes, uh, I was actually asking, the, there is a cost to rate pays because there is a lease incentive to um, move the police into the building. And I know we've discussed it, but, uh, uh, in this it's saying zero costs.
Uh, yeah, look, yes. E- e- every commercial lease in this country comes with a lease incentive. Now typically, that's applied, um, it may be by, uh, um, if I go and rent a store and I want to sell ties in the main street of Liverpool, typically what I'd get is a period of rent free, then a period of subsidised rent, and then my full rent would kick in. These are incentives. The, the rent incentive for the New South Wales Police was around, uh, the fit out. Um, the cops haven't got much money. Uh, and where, where we, where, what they do have though is, is well-established forecast budgets. So we applied, um, some commercial sense to this approach and got them in on a lease incentive that, that really meant that we would pay their, for their fit out, which saved them X over so many years. Now that the residual impact of that was actually a better deal than other people who have leased other floors. Uh, but in fact, um, I'm not saying they got the worst deal, but it was a better deal than some other people who have leased other floors. Uh, and then the other thing is, when, when you do those, um, uh, concessional agreements, whether it's, um, a, a, a reduced lease or otherwise, you're looking at the longevity of the tenant. So now we've got a tier one tenant, which gives us, um, a, a whole lot of advantages in the marketplace. And the other thing I should say is the police lease was negotiated at a period where the, where the joint was vacant. Um, so we are, um, what do they say? Don't go, don't go to Woolworths if you're hungry, do it while you're full. And we were hungry at the time and you're, you're gonna make those decisions. In retrospect, they're a good decision, great tenant, and, and we move forward.
Just finally, can we get that figure for the record? What was that figure?
Uh, we're not in comp, are we? It's a, well, commercial.
We're, we're not on comp, but we've had, we've had it, um, there's papers about this, which I'm sure can be circulated and reports about this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to do it.
No, it's not.
I think it's in the budget.
It's in, a hundred percent it's in the budget. It's been in the budget. Yes. Councillor Monahan, or councillor?
Uh, onto the, um, what the C E O was saying. Um, the police moving in here, we also get free security by them protecting me. So that's a bonus, yes.
Councillor Monahan, question seventeen in onwards.
Seventeen is answered, that's fine. Um, question eighteen. Given three says council will not achieve the originally budgeted eight, zero point eight million dollar surplus. Wouldn't question one really more accurately be no? Council will not achieve that surplus rather than not likely to the C E O?
The answer's no, council. We, 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 uh, we work, the director corporate services, Mr. CFO, he's not here anymore. Uh, we, we, um, we work incredibly hard to make sure that's a.
And I'm not saying you're not.
Um, a- a- and we're, we're optimistic.
Um, is there a projected final budget position that is a surplus or deficit at the moment?
It, y- yes, well, well, the Q one, we're doing the Q one projections. The, the problem with Q one projections is.
Just sorry, so we, we don't have a, we don't have a figure yet. Is that the case?
For, for the end of the financial year?
Yes, as in what we project currently will be the final outcome. At the value of either a surplus or a deficit. Do we have a projected?
Rough order of magnitude, it looks like a deficit.
Of?
Q one projections, I'm not gonna go there. Director of Corporate Services.
Through the C E O, councillors, at the governance committee, we provided a report which identified a number of risks. Um, and what they were, I think there were four main, main ones. And based on those four items alone, we provided a projected end of year deficit. But that did not include, and was made clear at the governance committee, I, I, any review yet in, 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 in other than identifying those four major risks of other things that may affect Q one for starters, which you will get next month, let alone for the first, rest of the year. In other words, whilst these four identified risks in the governance committee did indicate a significant uh, reduction in income for the P and L. Uh, and, and I stress a lot of that too, was timing difference. Um, and some, and, and some of it, uh, not cash, it, it's result P and L, but not cash. Um, but we haven't got, we haven't done the, you'll get the November quarter review, the September quarter review in November. And we haven't done yet the projection for the end of the year.
So at, at the moment, we've got a rough idea about what the final outcome might be pending the first quarterly review.
Yes.
Thank you. What is that rough idea?
Um, the figure that we.
Just before you go there, councillor, I have, I have to step out for a moment and there is no deputy mayor here. So I was just wondering, I was wondering if we can, uh, just nominate, uh, councillor Harrell. I'd like to nominate councillor Harrell just to take the chair in my absence. Everyone, seconder, second councillor, not, any, all those in favour, against declare carried.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer that if the director nods his head. It, it circa ten to twelve.
Thank you. Uh, deficit, correct?
Uh, deficit, correct. With, with so many caveats, it'd take us all night.
I understand that.
Yep.
Um, question nineteen, now. I don't ordinarily make it a practice of being critical of council staff, but I have to respectfully say that I'm not satisfied with the answer. The answers to these questions have been provided to the mayor and councillors in memos that are confidential dated three, eight and ten October. Um, can I ask why, to the C E O, why those are confidential? The memos that were circulated about the asbestos contamination at Pi Hill.
Oh, for probably many, for many reasons. Typically, they would have a, a, a commercial impact. Uh, um, they may, they may, I, I know there are four concurrent investigations. And suffice to say that staff members may be named in them. Um, is there anything else that you want to talk to director operations?
Uh, through the C E O, uh, marked confidential because we were sharing the information as we were receiving it. And it was also subject to external investigations that were and still are afoot. So releasing the information to the general public, we did update what we could, uh, to the general public via whether it was relevant to the residents or whether it was via our social media channels. But to provide more detail on what it was that we knew at that point in time, that's why it was treated accordingly. Because we were doing it as we were getting the information, so you were kept abreast of the latest information.
Thank you.
But as you would see, it changed over time.
Um, can we be provided with an updated memo? Um, this is through the C E O, that outlines what those investigations are. The status and progress of those investigations, when they commenced, et cetera. Thank you. Um, now, would answering these questions publicly, that is, on what date did council become aware and how council became aware? Was an inspection carried out? If not, why not? If so, what date was it carried out and what the result of that inspection was? Would that somehow or other prejudice the investigations that the director refers to?
Yes.
How so?
Well, we're all around the concept of procedural fairness at the moment. So I would suggest that, um, that's the, the basic rationale. I, I, I'm very confident around the timelines on this issue. Um, yeah, but that's really the reason, yeah.
Uh, if, if that information could also be provided in the memo, uh, to be circulated to councillors, I'd be much appreciated.
Thank you, councillor. We'll do that.
Um, the question twenty, I've spoken about that at length tonight. I, I won't canvass it any further. Got some undertakings from council staff that will be discussed with the relevant staff members and a response provided to some of the questions I asked earlier tonight. That was twenty, yes. Um, twenty one, again, I'm not satisfied that it would take greater than five hours to answer that question. If that can be provided, the break, the time breakdown that it would take to answer that question, because it's twenty twenty two and finding out whether or not a particular document was found, I'm not satisfied that that would take five hours.
Thank you. I, I might, it's tongue in cheek, councillor. I'm not laughing at you. I'm just, I understand our systems and the fact that we, um, we don't work with a legal management system. Um, and, uh, the highly, um, the high requirement on, on physical searches. So we'll, 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 we'll try and break down how we come up with a greater than five hour requirement on that one.
Thank you. Um, but that's not to say that it will take more than five hours.
No, I, I think the response is will likely. So let, let's have a look at, I'll ask the general counsel to take this on notice and we'll look, we'll look at an assessment. And if it meets our threshold in the policy, we will absolutely provide it.
Thank you. Um, question twenty two, whether or not legal advice was obtained in relation to that mayoral minute. Uh, and the, the question also relates to twenty three as to whether or not advice was obtained in relation to that mayoral minute. Um, page five of the confidential agenda, agenda book four. Question four, the answer is different to the public question. I think I can anticipate what the answer might be, but why does that the public question say no and the other question is different answer?
Okay, can we just forensically examine this? What, what, what comp are we talking to?
Number two.
Comp two.
Page six of that book.
Yep.
Question four, question and answer four.
Question, answer four, um. With legal, answer yes. Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's in, it's in the words. I, I, I think the, the legal advice as to the mayoral minute is correct. And then we're talking about the whole process of dismissal when we're talking about comp two.
Okay. Um, and was there any particular reason why twenty four wasn't answered for this meeting?
Uh, look, I, I can't answer off the floor. Probably a timing issue, um. Sorry, Director Corporate Services?
Timing, just, just resources to do what we had to do, our B A U with everything else, just didn't get time to.
That's fine. Thank you.
Right, fellow councillors, we're back in confidential, so you need to be careful what you say. And we have configure one.
Conf- confidential?
Confidential, but not closed. So question with notice was, uh, civic place expansion.
I think that was a question.
I think that was a question that the mayor posed, and he's not here.
And he's not here, and the configure two was questioned with notice, councillor Restevsky?
Yeah, I was just wondering why this is in confidential, I mean, residents have a right to know.
What was it about?
The council, it's a staff matter, or it was, it, it's a staff matter. Um, there are figures in the document. Um. They're probably the two main reasons.
Will, will this make the agenda once we pass this? Does it come out of confidential?
No, it, it doesn't remove itself from being a confidential report. It is, it is, it is a question without notice, and the questions have been answered. And it's now for you councillor and, and council to ask questions if there are any arising from what the officer's response is.
So after tonight's meeting, the public won't see this at all?
I wouldn't be ringing sports bet they won't see a confidential report from this council. Um, but ideally not.
Ideally not, hopefully not.
But, but if there's any, I mean, I, I was, I was the acting CEO when we were, when this transaction, if you can call it, that was occurring. So I'm happy to, uh, kind of ask any questions within the realm of its confidentiality, if, if anybody wants to ask me anything about it, I think, I think the answers are quite, uh, are quite clear.
Uh, yes. And the question doesn't, uh, require disclosing any confidential information. But the advice referred to in four, can a copy of that please be provided to councillors under confidential cover?
It, it, it may be available to you. A- a- and what I, I think, I think, and I'm kind of eyeballing the GC here, I, I, I think I would need to satisfy myself that the provision of that document has some purpose for your current civic duties.
I can explain why it might.
Yeah, again, I, I say, it, perhaps if this is, perhaps if we not take it offline, perhaps if, if we can, I can revert to the GC, I'm on notice, I'll take that question on notice. And I just want to check what constraints I have, don't forget there was a dude.
Yes.
And, and so I just need to be ca- uh, careful I navigate that before I provide it, but I, I'll, I'll seek the advice of the general counsel.
In respect of any questions about, um, how it relates to my obligation, I'm happy to answer those.
So op zero two.
Three seventy four.
Page three seven four.
With a recommendation on three seventy four.
Recommendation is on three seven four.
Oh, oh, yes, okay, now, we had, we had some, um, who's we had some comments, I think, from councillor Restevsky about the USU being on the, on the panel now.
I've got the motion here, it says, point number eight, establish a task force made up of councillors, deputy mayor Ha, Kani, and myself, together with a representative from the USU.
Yes.
Um, so it was passed that way.
Yeah, no, again, so councillor, the, 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 the ambiguity is around a, 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 these are council committees. So a, a staff, a staff member who was a delegate of the USU, I think we're, we're all very comfortable with that.
That's what I, I mean, that's what I meant.
On its first reading, we thought we were going to invite, uh, a, a particular union, of which we have three, to be, uh, uh, on a, on a waste committee, that, so.
Just a delegate that's, um, that understands this area, that can help us navigate through.
I, I think we're very, I think, uh, unless I'm seeing any dissent, I think we're very comfortable with that, so it's just clearing up that little issue. And, and so you still have to go to the, you still have to put it.
So. Sorry, so I need a mover for the recommendation, councillor Restevsky, a seconder. Councillor Monahan? Any discussion? Councillor Monahan, sorry?
Um, just with one, uh, amendment, just a second point. Um, to uh, appoint councillors Ha, Kani and Restevsky to the committee. Just to make it consistent with our earlier resolution.
Thank you. Everyone happy with that?
I think we're done.
We're done? Very good, we're done, so I can, I can actually close the meeting.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, so. You haven't voted yet, tear your slow. Careful councillor. Okay, uh, for the motion, those for the motion. Everybody, is anybody against? No, so it's unanimous, thank you, and I think that closes the meeting off. Thank you very much for your attendance, and we'll see you next time.